Good afternoon, councillors. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen? We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians, their language, songs and dance. We pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies, councillor Landers?
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Marks will be absent today and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from the meeting. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillor Marks be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,682nd meeting held on Tuesday 7th of June 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,682nd meeting of council held on 7th June 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no.
No!
The ayes have it. Councillors, no public participant today. We move straight on to question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a civic cabinet chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, over the weekend you announced a new initiative designed to keep all of Brisbane residents safe from a harsh summer sun. Can you please update the chamber on this new Shruna Council policy, including how it will be rolled out?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Atwood for the question. We heard some groans from the independent councillor, who obviously doesn't support shade in the suburbs, but we absolutely do because the residents of Brisbane rate our parklands so highly and they think it is so important and it is such a critical part of the fabric of our city, we're continuing to invest to make it better. And whether that is fixing up playgrounds and parks that have been damaged by the recent floods, or whether that is improving their playgrounds and parks as our city grows, we are focused on both of those things and we will continue to be. Now, the good news, councillor Atwood, is that through continued investment over many years, we already have a significant number of our playgrounds and parks that do have shade cover. And that is a combination of both natural tree cover and shade sales. And so what I announced on the weekend was a targeted programme to make sure that we finish this job off and finish it off as quickly as possible. And I think this is, once again, a classic example or a classic showcase of the priority of this administration, which is to invest in the suburbs of Brisbane, not just some parts of the city, but right across Brisbane. And so what we will see, what we will see is more than 150 playgrounds fast-tracked with shade over the coming years, in every part of Brisbane. And the people that are groaning and complaining will get a share of the love as well because we will be spreading this investment-
Councillor Johnston, please.
Right across the city of Brisbane.
Councillor Johnston, please stop interjecting.
And I think, Mr Chair, it is quite telling that councillors on the opposite side of the chamber stand up week after week and complain that they're apparently not getting enough investment in the suburbs, yet when we invest in the suburbs, they also complain. They also whine and gripe. And so what you can tell from this response says it all. They're all about the politics, not about the outcomes. They're all about the politics and not about the residents of Brisbane. We will continue to invest in important things for our city, like providing shade cover on our playgrounds. And as I said, it'll be a combination of shade sales and mature trees that we'll be planting. And each playground will be different. Some, it will be appropriate to have shade sales, others to have mature trees planted, and others a combination of both. But we'll be looking forward to rolling this programme out over the coming years to fast-track the finalisation of every single playground in Brisbane having shade cover. And now, we know that Queensland is the skin cancer capital of the world. We know that there are not too many people in our community that haven't been touched by skin cancer in some way. And as we get older, that risk gets higher as well. And there's not too many people in the community that, as they age, at some time during their life, won't need to get skin cancers cut off. Whether it's my own dad, who has that, or whether myself, who have had lumps cut off as well, it affects everyone. And so by making sure that we have shade for our playgrounds, starting off that sun-safe environment at a young age for our children, we can have a safer and healthier community and we can have better parks for our community as well. So this, I think, is an important initiative and one that I'm excited to announce and one that I know that every councillor will be wholeheartedly supporting, getting behind, and also helping us identify which playgrounds in their area will have the combination of either shade sales or trees and what's appropriate for each area. So thank you for the question, councillor Atwood. I know that as a mum of young children-
Excuse me, Lord Mayor. Councillor- You're very interested in this one. Excuse me, Lord Mayor. Councillor Sri, are you taking a point of order?
No, Chair, I was raising my hand to speak for the next question. There's a bit of a lag, so it's kind of awkward to know when to put my hand up. But I'll interrupt you if I have a point of order.
Thank you.
I'll just turn on the mic for that.
You're done. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Sri, I'll take your question.
Thanks, Chair. My question's to the mayor, and I was interested to see today the draft proposed route for the new Gold City Glider. And I was a little bit concerned and disappointed that it's proposing to run back through the city rather than running along Main Street through Kangaroo Point. So I wonder if you could provide us a bit more information about why the proposed route doesn't extend further south to Annelie and why the proposed route doesn't run along Main Street and over the Story Bridge in order to pick up those high-density, high-growth catchments through Kangaroo Point?
Lord Mayor.
Yeah, thanks for the question, councillor Sri. And certainly, I'm very excited that councillor Murphy and I have been able to support the business case for the creation of a new Gold City Glider. And that Gold City Glider links some important and rapidly growing parts of our city, whether it's places like Hamilton North Shore, which are not only rapidly growing but will be part of the Olympics with the Olympic Village being located there, along the newly upgraded Kingsford Smith Drive, and the Gold City Glider would not be possible unless we had upgraded Kingsford Smith Drive, a project that Labour continues to oppose and criticise, but one that facilitates better public transport through that corridor and also better active transport as well with the new Loris Bonney Riverwalk. And so what has been put forward to Translink is a business case and a funding proposal. Now, this is something we committed to in the last budget to finalise, and I'm pleased to say that we have now submitted the business case to Translink. Obviously, Translink will have their own views on this.
Point of order, Chair.
We-
Point of order to you, councillor Sri.
Sorry to interject, just on relevance, the question was specifically about why the proposed route doesn't extend south to Annelie and why it doesn't pick up those very high-growth corridors around Kangaroo Point. It's a specific question about why those parts of the inner city have been left out.
Don't debate the question, please. Councillor Sri, the Lord Mayor is answering the question.
Yeah, thank you. Certainly, which exactly what I was doing, Mr Chair, answering the question. Last time I checked, I had five minutes to answer the question and I was covering very relevant information to explain the process of where we've been, why this proposal has come into being, and why is it important. And so in developing this proposal, we've had a look at where the growth is happening, where the demand is, and that has helped inform the decisions or the proposals on where the stop should go and where the route should go. Now, it's definitely the case that, and I know councillor Sri has continued to suggest that Kangaroo Point should have access to a city glider-like service, and that is something I know he's aware of, but if he did that, the service would not go through the CBD. And so the modelling shows that the demand is very much through the CBD. And so, yes, by all means, I take councillor Sri's point, but the modelling would indicate otherwise. And I would also point out that if you live in Kangaroo Point, in a very short period of time, you'll be able to walk across the new bridge we're building and jump on the Gold City Glider. And you'll also be able to jump on the upgraded dockside ferry terminal and get around the place as well. So, you know, our investment in Kangaroo Point is there, it's ongoing, it's continuing, and it is significant. And so we do support better access for Kangaroo Point, but we know that the modelling here shows that demand is a route that goes through the CBD, but also linking in with our new infrastructure such as the new ferry terminals and the new Kangaroo Point Greenbridge which will be built. Now, from here, the state government has to make a decision on this particular glider proposal. We stand ready to put in our fair share of funding towards this. And you will be aware that the very first city glider, the Blue City Glider, was a Brisbane City Council proposal, and there was resistance to that proposal in the beginning. Mr Chair, you will know this well because it was actually you that chaired a report which led to the creation of the Blue City Glider. And originally, there was pushback from Translink saying, "Oh, no, we don't support a separately branded service, it needs to be just like a normal service, not individually branded." And very quickly, once we got approval and went ahead with the Blue City Glider, it became one of the city's most popular routes, out of all of them. There are hundreds of different routes across the city. The glider quickly became one of the most popular, if not the most popular. And so that service originally was funded 50/50 between Brisbane City Council and Translink, i.e. the state government, and we're making the same proposal going forward in our business case. Obviously, we introduced the Marone City Glider. Sadly, the state government decided to play petty politics and haven't agreed to put in a cent towards the Marone City Glider, despite the fact that they received $2 million in fare revenue from the Marone City Glider. So they're making a profit out of this service, yet not putting a single cent back into it. It does cost us around $6 million a year to run the Marone City Glider. The state government makes $2 million from it in fares and doesn't put a, you know, a meaningful contribution into that. So we're hoping that the state government will have a different and more enlightened approach when it comes to the Gold City Glider. This is going to be a fantastic service for the city-
Lord Mayor, your time-
And thanks councillor Sri for the question.
Has expired. Further questions? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, the Shruna Council has supported removing the Coopers Plains Open Level Crossing for years now, including committing tens of millions of dollars to its removal. Could you please update the chamber on the current state of play in this state government-led project?
Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you to councillor Huang. I know a person keenly interested in this project, a dedicated Southsider and someone who wants to make sure that the network that services his community is as good as possible. The Coopers Plains Open Level Crossing removal project is one that this council supports. And I think that's important to say early, that we support this project, we were the first to commit genuine money to it at $40 million, a $40 million standing commitment. This Lord Mayor, Lord Mayor Shruna, one of the first things he did when he became Lord Mayor was recommit that money and that made to ensure that the standing support for the removal of open level crossings in this city was clear and remains. And we have a good record of working with the state to remove open level crossings, which include some of the older ones now that we've been working on, for example Telegraph Road or Robinson Road, but also more recently the Lindham Crossing, which has been largely well-received, and we're working on a stage two project that's in the eastern suburbs, and also the Beams Road project, where we have engaged meaningfully through the technical working group and the steering committee to make sure that that project is a quality project for the people of the north side. Now, the state has proposed an open level crossing removal for the Coopers Plains area. It is, there's effectively two that are proposed. One that is an ordinary crossing that you would normally see, the other includes a raised connection to Orange Grove Road, which is a principal north-south connector through that sort of Salisbury-Coopers Plains community. The price tag on these is $399 million, which would make it the most expensive open level crossing in this state's history. Now, we had committed first, and in many ways best, to $40 million to make sure that that project had the funds available to get it going, but also that council had a way to cooperate with the state in a meaningful way. And why is it important? Had we not cooperated with the state in a meaningful way, on Beams Road, the drainage would have been appalling and would have affected private residences. Older people would have been forced to walk across the rail line still rather than go over the new footpath that is now proposed. The braking required of heavy vehicles because of the decline coming over the crest would have been unsafe. All of this, all of this was done because it was important to make it safe and compliant in a pedestrian sense for people with a disability, but also safe for motorists while removing this crossing. Now, I suspect, I suspect that the reason that the state proposed a much shorter and steeper open level crossing is because it is cheaper, Mr Chair. That is why they're doing it, because the state doesn't have the money to fulfil their commitments on open level crossings. Which is why, when the federal government proposed $133 million in the recent elections for this Coopers Plains Open Level Crossing, and you put that with our $40 million, and then the state announced $133, it was pretty predictable that the state was going to come cap in hand to us and ask us to make up the difference. Now, that would make it one of the largest projects that this city has engaged in this term, but also foregoes the state's obligation to rail, to rail infrastructure. As we say over and over and over-
Councillor Johnston, please.
Queensland Rail is a Queensland government responsibility. The Brisbane City Council supports the state government in improving infrastructure around it and works with them, often providing expertise to improve the project as we have done at the Castledine project. But we are here to make sure that these projects work for Brisbane. Now, the problem is, because the state is not putting money in, they're coming to us like we're some kind of ATM, Mr Chair, demanding cash and saying effectively, if we don't, if we don't give them the money that they are demanding, they won't. It's a sticker with the interjection. If we don't hand over the cash, then the people of the Souths don't get the project. That is obviously the state government's responsibility. It's obviously their responsibility. We are coming to the table with $40 million, and it's important to remember that no other local government in Queensland puts any money, any money. Definitely not low.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. I'm glad you could see me this time. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Brisbane is now in the top 10 cities in the world for property price growth. We have over 50,000 people on the waitlist for social housing. Brisbane's residential vacancy rate is below 1% and falling, and we have residents sleeping in cars, tents and on the street. You've repeatedly shifted responsibility to address Brisbane's housing affordability crisis to other levels of government. As the leader of this city-
Point of order, Chair. Are we getting to a question?
Why are you refusing to address this crisis other than saying it's somebody else's problem?
Sorry, councillor Murphy, we have the question. Thank you. Councillor Cassidy, thank you. Lord Mayor. Please take a point of order first before just shouting out, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, isn't it interesting? Councillor Cassidy, in his political question to me, raises concerns about the public housing waiting list, as though it was a council issue. And then he claims that we have somehow shifted responsibility. The only person I can see that is shifting responsibility here is councillor Cassidy himself and the Australian Labor Party, because building government housing is a government responsibility. That's why it is government housing. It's not council housing. We don't have council flats here. It is government housing. And so the state government, year after year, has failed to meet their commitments to the people in the most need, and now the Labor Party tries to blame the council.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, I was very clear, I was talking about social housing. I didn't mention government housing in my question at all. So I'd just ask you to draw the Lord Mayor back to the question rather than debating the question itself, and he should be answering the question.
The Lord Mayor is only 60 seconds or so or less into the answer. Lord Mayor.
Don't you love, Mr Chair, how he always lets the state government off the hook for their failures and everything is somehow supposed to be council's fault? No one believes that, councillor Cassidy. Everyone knows that the public housing waiting list is representative of the state government's failure.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yes, the question is about social housing, and I would like to understand the answer because I think it is relevant to our council, because we do represent the community. So if you could draw the Lord Mayor back to the question, which is about social housing, not public housing. Thank you.
The question related to the overall issue of housing affordability is what I heard in the question. The Lord Mayor is answering the question.
So the Labor Defence Forces sprang into action again, and the reality is, those questions, those interjections-
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Point of order, the Lord Mayor has just referred to me as a Labor councillor. This is number one, this is number one untrue. Number two, I find it offensive, it's not respectful, it's unsuitable meeting conduct.
Councillor Johnston, this isn't a point of order.
It is, it is a point of order.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
It is a point of order.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
And I would like to be able to make my-
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Councillor Johnston, your assertion is not a correct point of order.
I'm sorry, I said point of order and I'm explaining why something is unsuitable meeting conduct. Can you please explain to me why that's not a point of order?
I don't believe the Lord Mayor is committing unsuitable meeting conduct. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
So it is a point of order, but you're not upholding my point of order.
Question, please sit down, councillor.
No, I would like to have a ruling on my point of order.
Your point of order was that the Lord Mayor was conducting unsuitable meeting conduct. I don't agree with you. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Now, what we heard is councillor Cassidy referred to the public housing waiting list, and now you have people complaining that I'm talking about public housing. You have people complaining when it was in his question.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
And he doesn't want me to answer the question, obviously.
Well, you didn't listen to the question clearly, Lord Mayor. Chair, my question was very clear, I mentioned the social housing waitlist, but the question is, what is our city's leader going to do to play his part in addressing this problem? If you could draw him to answering that question rather than just debating the question itself, that would be handy.
Councillor Cassidy, the question was a broad-ranging question about housing affordability. The Lord Mayor is answering the question.
Thank you. Now, I would put a general question to councillors. Are there two waiting lists? Is there a social housing waiting list with 50,000 people on it and a separate public housing waiting list with 50,000 people on it? No, there is only one waiting list. There is only one waiting list.
Councillor Johnston, please.
Well, I stand up, I make a point of order.
And please don't shout. I'll take your point of order.
The Lord Mayor talked over me the whole time. I didn't get the same courtesy from the Lord Mayor, Mr Chair. You're going to pull him up on that.
Councillor Johnston, what is your point of order?
That the Lord Mayor, under the meeting's local law, the Lord Mayor is not allowed to debate the question, he must answer the question, and asking questions about the question is not answering it. Please draw him back to answering the question.
Councillor Johnston, the question was a broad-ranging question about housing affordability. The Lord Mayor is answering the question.
Okay, so councillor Cassidy's question referred to a waiting list with 50,000 people on it. There is only one waiting list that I am aware of with 50,000 people on it, and it is the state government's housing waiting list. And whatever you choose to call it, there are 50,000 people on this list waiting for state government-provided housing.
So you won't help with the answer.
So the reality is-
You'll do nothing.
Councillor Cassidy, please.
The reality is councillor Cassidy has taken the state government's failure and asked what the Brisbane City Council is doing about the state government's failure. Well, I referred to this last week, because when you listen to the words of your factional leader councillor Cassidy, who is Treasurer Cameron Dick, he very clearly indicated when it comes to housing affordability that there are no simple solutions and there are multiple levers to be pulled, and he highlighted the levers which he wanted councils to pull. Two things: land supply and development approvals. Did Treasurer Cameron Dick say you should build council flats? No, he didn't. He didn't. So councillor Cassidy's factional leader knows the truth here. He knows that there is a big problem with state government housing, there is a big waiting list for state government housing, and councillor Cassidy is simply trying to make this a political issue to cover up his own state government's dismal failure when it comes to housing. Now, I used to think that the Labor Party cared about those less fortunate. I used to think that having 50,000 people on a waiting list would cause the Labor Party to spring into action, to do something to protect and support and embrace their key supporters, their key supporters. And it is no coincidence that people in public housing at the last federal election didn't vote Labor, they voted Green. It is no coincidence because Labor has abandoned them. Labor has let them down, more badly than any other government has let them down, more badly than we've ever seen before, and the public housing or social housing waiting list is the biggest that has ever been because Labor doesn't care. And so if councillor Cassidy really cared, he'd be asking his mates in the state government what they are doing about the public housing or social housing waiting list. Not asking us in the council what we are doing.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions?
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
He doesn't care, that's the answer, he doesn't care.
The answer has been concluded, but point of order, councillor Johnston.
Mr Chairman, I don't know if you can't see me or you can't hear me, but that was three times I said point of order, it was three times the first time.
What is your point of order, councillor Johnston?
So I'd just like, I would like to know that you can see and hear me because you haven't been giving me the call.
Councillor Johnston, I can see and I can hear you, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my point of order is that the Lord Mayor's debate there is not respectful, it was absolutely argumentative and not answering the question. So can you please advise us why you did not enforce the meeting's local law regarding unsuitable meeting conduct and addressing the answer of the question as is required in the meeting's local law?
Councillor Johnston, thank you. I don't agree with your assertions. I believe the Lord Mayor answered the question as was put to him. Further questions? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is the Chair of Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the recent announced Woolangaba Metro Station is a vital piece of city-shaping infrastructure, crucial for our city as we head towards 2032. Could you please update the chamber on the importance of this project? And are you aware of any other alternatives?
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Thanks, Mr Chair, and happy Budget Week. It's an important week for a number of reasons, and tomorrow we'll hear from the Lord Mayor about his priorities to make the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today. What we'll see is we'll see a mature administration, the Shruna Council, and how it deals with the rebuild and recovery task following the floods. But we'll also get to hear the opposition leader's alternative budget priorities, and no, that's not councillor Sri, not yet in any case. We'll get to hear from councillor Cassidy about the Labor team's vision, particularly as it relates to Metro and the Gabba Station. Mr Chair, this morning councillor Cassidy outlined his budget priorities and I was very excited because I thought for once we might hear a grand plan from the leader of the opposition. Something more than hot takes about walking around money, living in Brisbane, casualisation of the workforce or Big Bendy buses. And so what? When given the opportunity to shed some light on Labor's alternative budget, did he tell ABC Radio this morning?
Point of order.
Well, point of order, councillor Johnston.
Mr Chairman, I would draw your attention to the fact that the Chair knows that the leader of the opposition cannot bring new items to the chamber, he can only debate the items that are brought forward. His question is being disrespectful to the rules of procedure in this place, and he is making argumentative statements that are simply untrue. The leader of the opposition cannot bring his own budget to this chamber for debate. It's not allowed under the meeting's local law, and he's been here long enough to know this. Please draw it out, rule it out of order.
I'm not, thank you councillor Johnston, I'm not ruling the answer out of order. I think councillor Murphy is referring to statements that were made by councillor Cassidy- Murphy is referring to statements that were made by councillor Cassidy in regard to his budget submission, and I believe the Chair is answering the question. Councillor Murphy.
And so what, when given the opportunity to shed some light on Labour's alternative budget, did he tell ABC Radio this morning?
Point of order.
Well, councillor Cassidy said that he wanted...
Councillor Johnston, point of order.
Clearly, Mr Chairman, the Chair has just said that he's referring to the alternative budget from the leader of the opposition, there is no such thing, the budget being handed down tomorrow is the council budget handed down by the Lord Mayor, and the Chair is referring to something that is not allowed under the meeting's local law, which is disrespectful and argumentative, and I would ask you to draw it out of order.
Councillor Johnston, the budget will be brought down tomorrow, the following week will be budget debate, the Chair is answering a question that relates to statements that were made by councillor Cassidy, I understand, on radio this morning, I believe the answer is relevant to the question. Thank you, councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Chair, well councillor Cassidy said that he wanted to reallocate the $200 million, which was allocated towards the purchase of the Visi site in South Brisbane. Fair enough, how did he spend his $200 million win for? Well firstly, Chair, he said he wanted to spend a grand total of $200 million on social and affordable housing. Well firstly, I wonder how much of that housing councillor Cassidy wants to see in Deegan Ward? I guess not much, because just last week councillor Cassidy voted against the Sangate neighbourhood plan. This is, of course, after two years and many opportunities to tell his community that they should accept even slightly increased densities in it. Do you think he asked his community to come with him on his road to Damascus journey towards supporting affordable housing? Of course not. So of course, Chair not content with spending 100% of the money supposedly saved by council not purchasing the Visi site, councillor Cassidy just kept on announcing stuff. He said he would double the suburban drainage budget from $60 million to something in the order of $120 million, but there was no strategy on how this would be delivered or where. But then he just kept on announcing, he announced $200 million would also fund a citywide rollout of Fogo. Councillor Cassidy said to the presenter...
Councillor Johnston, will you take your seat, please?
It's sure to create lots of local jobs, he just couldn't tell her how many jobs or what the rollout would cost, and when they asked the question, how much would that commitment be in the budget, he said that would have to be fully costed, it would be a significant investment. Well of course, indeed, it would be councillor Cassidy, likely more than the total of all of the commitments you had made so far. Only this Labour opposition Chair could take $200 million of supposed savings, spend $260 million of it, and not know how much a third of their announcement would cost or when it could be delivered. It is a magic pudding approach to accounting. So behind Labour's double counting and funny money, what's the real impact here? What's the truth? Is there really just $200 million sitting under the couch cushion? Of course not. The Lord Mayor has been very clear, the state government is now leading the Visi site acquisition, that money has been reallocated to construction of the Gaba Metro Station. This was announced by the Lord Mayor and Premier Palashay as part of the South East Queensland City Deal. Mr Chair, is councillor Cassidy so petty? Is his hatred for Metro and public transport so visceral now that he wants to scrap the Gaba Metro Station to build affordable housing? Because, Mr Chair, that's what the $200 million councillor Cassidy wants to triple-spend is currently going towards. He wants to leave the Gaba PDA without Metro services, and by the way, only a few months ago, the Shrima Council supported affordable housing as part of the Gaba precinct. How does councillor Cassidy...
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last year, your big budget announcement was four Chinese-made buses. This year, you're ramping up publicity for your overseas bendy bus project. Despite having local bus manufacturers right here in Brisbane, with an extensive history of building council buses, you continue to snub them year on year. Lord Mayor, while the state and federal governments are supporting local manufacturing, and note they're Labour governments, why do you go out of your way, as a Liberal Lord Mayor, to snub local manufacturers? Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, look, the only thing that I snub are people that don't tell the truth, and councillor Griffiths is one of those people, because he knows the fact here, he knows the fact here that not a single job has been lost in a local manufacturer...
Excuse me, Lord Mayor, point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Thank you. Mr Chairman, it's disrespectful and unsuitable meeting conduct to say in such a rude way to another fellow councillor in this place, that they are...
A liar.
Yeah, that's pretty much what the Lord Mayor just said, he accused councillor Griffiths of being a liar to his face, which is not suitable meeting conduct, and I would ask you to withdraw it.
Councillor Johnston, you're debating the point of order, and I don't believe those words were used by the Lord Mayor.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Murphy.
I would just ask that you rule on councillor Johnston's repeated points of order that she is making, I believe that that is in itself an active disorder, because she is continually using them to disrupt the proceedings of this council, and to stop people from answering questions which they have legitimately been asked. It continues to happen, Chair, this is now the sixth occasion.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Johnston, you have been taking multiple points of order, I ask you to be considerate, please, of the responses that have been provided to the questions here today.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Councillor Adams interrupted me and made 13 points of order a few weeks ago, and you kicked me out for making one.
Oh, councillor...
So no, Mr Chairman, I would like the rules to be clear here for everyone, because it's my understanding if someone engages in unsuitable meeting conduct, I can raise it. So, how many is it? Is it 13, as councillor Adams did, and you say nothing? Or is it four or five of I have done, under the rules, to try and get some decorum and appropriateness back into the chamber? Can you please tell me what the number is, so that I am aware?
Councillor Johnston, that's not a relevant question for a point of order, I'll rule on your point of order about the way the question was being answered, I believe the question was being answered relevant to the question. Lord Mayor, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, I was pointing out when mistruths have been peddled, and in particular by opposition councillors about the issue of bus building and bus procurement in Brisbane, we know in the past that there have been false claims made about people losing their jobs, or jobs put at risk, and we know that not a single job has been lost in a Brisbane bus manufacturing facility as a result of anything that Brisbane City Council has done, and that mistruth continues to be peddled. And so what we see here is a case where we have a trial of four electric buses, and we have seen this side of the chamber actively supporting the decarbonisation of public transport, whether it's our electric bus trial, or whether it's our Brisbane Metro fully-electric vehicles, we are heading full steam ahead down the path of decarbonisation, reducing emissions, zero tailpipe emissions from these vehicles, yet we see Labour councillors continuing to oppose this important journey, continuing to oppose in an attempt to score cheap political points. But it's interesting, because we saw just the other day, the Metro Pilot vehicle arrived in Brisbane, and it was getting ready to go into testing, and where was it? It was at the local Volgrin manufacturing facility, where local Volgrin workers were assisting to get this vehicle ready to go into service. And so, like, it is quite clear that Labour councillors are trying to mislead the people of Brisbane here.
Councillor Strunk.
And so, we also know that Volgrin was part of the winning tender for the Brisbane Metro. Like, honestly, it is shameful what these people try and say and peddle as facts when they are the opposite to facts, they are mistruths, and we will continue to call them out. If councillor Cassidy and his team continue to stop, continue to tell lies like this, and peddle mistruths, we will always continue to call them out.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Mr Chairman, now the Lord Mayor has accused councillor Cassidy of telling lies, I've been expelled in this place for saying someone lied, so are you going to take action against the Lord Mayor's unsuitable meeting behaviour using that language?
Lord Mayor, there's been a request that you withdraw the word lies, will you do so, please?
I'm happy to clarify.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
No, Mr Chairman, I was expelled unilaterally by you for saying the word liar, I expect you to uphold the same standard and actually expel the Lord Mayor, that's what I'm asking for.
Thank you, no, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. So let's be clear about what has been said here. I have been asked a question about why I am supposedly snubbing local manufacturers when it comes to bus building, yet Volgrin, a local manufacturer, was part of the Brisbane Metro winning tender, and is assisting us in providing this vehicle and putting it into testing. You can make your own judgement on whether that is the truth from councillor Griffiths, or something other than the truth, but I think it's pretty obvious. It is pretty obvious, and so I am simply saying that if Labour councillors, whoever they might be, continue to say things that are completely wrong, I will continue to point out the truth. And, you know, this is what we have to do in this kind of toxic environment that Labour is creating.
Point of order to you, councillor Griffiths. I listened to the Lord Mayor, I would ask that he withdraws the comment about lying, it's not true. Other members of the chamber are not allowed to say lying, and the Lord Mayor just justified his reason for using lying. I would ask him to withdraw.
Councillor Griffiths, to your point of order, I don't believe the Lord Mayor used those words. Lord Mayor.
If you want me to withdraw the word liar, I am happy, or lie, I'm happy to do so, Mr Chair.
Excuse me, Lord Mayor, I've got three points of order, it would appear. Councillor...
I move dissent in your ruling.
Okay, dissent has been moved in my ruling, and seconded by councillor Griffiths, all in favour of that dissent motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
As I was pointing out, it's important that the people of Brisbane know the truth, and that's what I've continued to explain. There is quite clearly an ongoing issue with opposition councillors thinking they can say anything they want, even if it is completely untrue, and that they won't be called out on it.
Councillor Johnston, please.
Mr Chair, there's been some discussion about respect in the chamber, and it seems clear to me that there is one councillor who is showing no respect to yourself and to anyone else in this chamber, and that is a repeated problem throughout the whole meeting. And so I would simply say, if that councillor thinks that respect is important, then she might want to start by showing some respect to other councillors as well, I think that would be good for the entire environment in this chamber.
But, councillor Johnston, further questions? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Mr Chair, my question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, the Shrima Council has a strong track record of investing in our roads, so we can get residents home sooner and safer. Could you please update the chamber on the latest works happening in my ward of Jamboree?
Thank you, councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and can I thank councillor Hutton for her question and the enthusiasm with which she engages in making the road network for her community even better. So just for some orientation for the council, Monia Road is the eastern side of Sumner's Road, I think, I always feel like Sumner's Road is a well-known road, which is a western heading road off the freeway, but Monia Road is the eastern side of it. The intersection that was recently upgraded by council is the Monia Road and Bellwood Street intersection. Now, I had the great pleasure of going out to the southwestern suburbs recently to turn the lights on, or more specifically, watch councillor Hutton flick the switch to turn the lights on, but it was really important that these landmark moments where we see these new infrastructure come online, and it shows that these things are being achieved to make our road network safer and more efficient. And whenever we do these, there's always a small period where there's like a, where all access points to the road are held, and held for maybe 10 minutes as the lights get turned on, and then sequenced properly, and I've never seen a person complain about being held, waiting for the lights to be turned on, because they know what a moment it is that the roadworks are coming to an end, and the things are going to be better for them. The intersection that we're discussing was previously unsignalised, and it had designated right turn and left turn slip lanes in both directions along Monia, with stop signs controlling Bellwood, the Bellwood access. Between July 2016 and June 2021, there were 12 recorded crashes, of which there were eight hospitalisations, three medical treatments, and one minor injury. Eleven of the 12 incidents were crashes involving vehicles turning at the intersection, and vehicles failing to stop or give way at the stop sign. Now, because it was an uncontrolled intersection, there were movements that were not controlled by a set of lights, and as a result, there were motor vehicle accidents. I know that the local community was keen on this upgrade, and congratulations to councillor Hutton for her advocacy to secure the work and ensure that it was completed. Can I also thank the Australian Government's Roads to Recovery Programme, without whose support we would not have been able to achieve it in the timeframe possible. Now, I also wanted to make mention of the fact that the operation of the lights was some weeks late, and that was due to rain, and as many councillors would know, it was an unseasonably wet May, and a lot of our road programme is aimed or projected to be constructed in the dry season, which is our winter or our later autumn. As a result of that, it was some weeks late, but I know that the final work was very much appreciated by that local community. Now, one of the other major issues was the sidelines, because of the crest, allowed for the vehicles to misread the distances that were appropriate. There's also on-road cycle lanes along Monia, which is the principal east-west movement, as discussed earlier, and the provision of pedestrian crossings on three of the crossings, which also makes for a lot safer movement for pedestrians. The Jamboree Ward residents and local workers in the industrial estates in particular, many people connected to our community here in council are really, really happy with the changes, and that's been relayed to us quite enthusiastically. So the project costs $4.7 million, and it's part of our commitment to busting traffic congestion. The further work is the Boundary and Skeper work, which is ongoing, and I'm going to speculate the Boundary Road and Formation Street, that is also in yours, its redistribution sometimes confused where the line is for me, but yes, Ellen Grove is there, and that is still to come for the Jamboree community. You know, full consideration for our crews, I know that the wet weather really did impede the work, and that at some instances, to try and get the asphalt in, they were working double shifts, which I really appreciate, that did occasionally affect traffic in that community. So can I thank the local workers, the local residents, for their patience? It is an excellent upgrade to make sure that this particular intersection is safer and more efficient, at a cost of $4.7 million, it will be a big improvement for the southwestern suburbs.
Thank you, councillor Wines, that ends question time. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report... Ah, excuse me, councillor Strunk?
Yes, Chair, I just want to ask you to answer a question in regards to a procedural matter, and that is during question times, when questions are being answered, and points of orders are made, does the time get suspended when the point of order, or is the point of order chewing into the answer in questions?
Your supposition is correct, the timer keeps going, thank you. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report, 6 June 2022...
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 6 of June 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, it has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday 6 June 2022 be adopted.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I'm seeking some further information in respect to item A on the ENC report, which is the changes to the Suburban Enhancement Fund policy. Can a list of any ward budgets be provided outlining any impacts from this policy if it's being implemented this year? Thank you.
Can list of ward budgets, sorry, can you say that again?
Yes, what are the impacts on the ward budgets if it's being implemented this year? That's what I'm seeking.
Thank you, noted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, before I move on to other issues, I would simply say councillor Strunk has raised a really relevant question here, because those opposite claim to be interested in the democratic process and a good, healthy democratic system, yet the continued interrupting of question time, which appears to be a deliberate strategy involving continued points of order and disrespect to councillors that are speaking, is actually eating into the amount of time available for question time, which reduces the number of questions that can be asked. It is extraordinary that an opposition would allow this kind of thing to go on, extraordinary. The Labour councillors... The Labour councillors got to ask two questions as a result of the continued interruption by certain councillors. And so I would simply say what on earth are they trying to achieve with this extraordinary political strategy of interruption when instead I would suggest that they simmer down and ask some more questions and maybe listen to the answers that are given rather than continually interrupting? I wanted to talk about a really important and topical issue and that is the issue of housing affordability. It is an issue that has generated considerable interest in the media and in the community and it is an issue that we should all be putting our minds to because right now we have a situation where we have seen some of the largest increases in property values in a long, long time and we see a situation where not only are people being or feeling as though they're locked out of buying a home or owning a home, but also renters are really struggling as well because the rental vacancy rate is incredibly low. There's a chronic shortage of rental accommodation and this is something that we should all be taking an interest in. Now, what we know is that when it comes to the challenge, it's not just a challenge of homeownership, it's also a challenge for renters. And so we need to be thinking about both of those issues and both of those challenges. But I did want to point out some really important information that will help when councillors are coming to an opinion or forming an opinion on what can help when it comes to affordability. Now councillor Cassidy before was talking about the public housing waiting list or the social housing waiting list or the government housing waiting list. Regardless of what you call it, there's 50,000 people on it across the state. Now, that is very much the state's problem to deal with. It is their housing and it is their waiting list, but what can we do? One of the most important things and it's indicated by Treasurer Cameron Dick is to look at the supply and construction of new housing in Brisbane. The supply and construction of new housing in Brisbane. Now, I have heard people like councillor Sri suggest that building more new housing, if it's private sector driven, does not do anything to increase affordability. Has anyone else heard that he made that claim? He makes that claim on a regular basis. Well, let's have a look at the facts and figures. When you have a look at what's happened to house prices in Brisbane and you have a look at the last several years and in particular even going as much as two decades, you see something very interesting happening. You see that standalone house prices are growing at a far faster rate than unit prices. Let me repeat that, standalone house prices are growing at a far faster rate than unit prices. Now, has anyone studied basic economics here and have an idea on why this might be? Supply and demand. The reality is in Brisbane, because we have limited greenfield areas, the majority of new housing supply has been apartments. And so as infill development occurs, we've been building more apartments, the price of apartments is not increasing nearly as rapidly as the price of standalone homes. Now, these are both market forces at work here, whether it's the standalone homes or the apartment, but we're seeing that apartment prices have grown far less quickly than standalone house prices. Now, what does that tell you? If you increase the supply of a particular type of housing, it helps keep affordability levels in a better place. It helps make homes more affordable if you increase the supply. And it was actually quite relevant that we saw just in recent times in the Australian Financial Review, an article just in April that says here, "The gap between house prices and apartment prices in Brisbane is now the widest in at least two decades." He said, the Colliers Residential Director for Queensland, Andrew Rubrik, said, "The price difference between houses and apartments in Brisbane has reached 45%." So there is a 45% loading on houses as opposed to apartments. This was only a 20% loading between 2003 and 2015. Now, what happened after 2015? You saw as a result of a range of market forces.
We built a lot of really poor quality apartments and no one wants to live in them because they're not well designed.
Okay, Mr Chair, thank you. What happened in around 2016? You saw a combination of market forces, growing population and investment in Brisbane generating a big number of new apartments being built. And in fact, in 2016, 11,000 new apartments were built in Brisbane in 2016. Now, if you believe councillor Sri, that wouldn't have done anything to affordability or house prices. But here's what happened. From 2016 through to 2020, there was no increase in average apartment prices in Brisbane. So the figures show if you put a big new supply of apartments into the market, it helps moderate apartment prices for many years to come. And so you can see here the graph very clearly, apartment prices were going up until about 2015 and then they went flat for five years after that because more apartments were being built in Brisbane. Now, you didn't see the same thing happen with standalone homes and in fact standalone homes continued to grow exponentially even during that time. So what does it tell you? Supply of new housing, development approvals make a difference when it comes to Brisbane being an affordable place. And if you don't believe that, you are in some kind of fantasy land, some kind of magic pudding economics fantasy land. The reality is supply matters, supply helps keep the price of housing more affordable. Now, if you think about the situation that we're in at the moment, 2016, there were 11,000 new apartments built in Brisbane. How many do you think were built in Brisbane last year? What, 10,000, 7,000? No, 2,300. 2,300 apartments were built in Brisbane last year compared to 11,000 in 2016. And now you wonder why there is an affordability challenge? The supply has come down dramatically and in fact by almost 80% compared to the peak. And who's... And who's, yeah, and this is actually the number of apartments that are built, not the number of DAs. Now, who's contributing to rising house prices?
Point of order.
Point of order to you councillor Murphy.
Will the Lord Mayor take a question?
Lord Mayor, will you take a question from councillor Murphy?
Lord Mayor, would you reflect on Labour's long-held position against approvals for development in this place as well as the Greens' approach to housing policy in this place and what you've observed over the last three years?
Point of order, Mr Chair. I don't think councillor Murphy was asking a question, he was making a statement, asking the Lord Mayor to reflect.
I'll rule on that councillor Strunk, I heard a question being asked, Lord Mayor.
Okay, I'm happy to reflect councillor Murphy, I'm happy to reflect because this is an issue we should all be reflecting on. And so what we have seen time and time again in this place and in the community is that the councillors on this side of the chamber, to my right, the Labour councillors, the Green councillor and the independent seem to do one thing and one thing only when it comes to development and that is oppose, oppose, oppose. They oppose week in, week out, the building of new homes in their communities. They oppose them. And, you know, this is, they've gone very quiet because they know that they are caught out. This is the truth.
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Johnston, please don't shout out across the chamber.
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Johnston. Councillor Strunk, you have a point of order?
Yes.
Yes, no, okay. Oh, sorry, councillor Sri appears to have a point of order on the screen.
Yeah, I'm wondering if the Lord Mayor will take a quick question.
Lord Mayor, will you take a question from councillor Sri? No, Lord Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and look councillor Sri would pipe up because he's the worst offender. He is the worst offender. His view is pretty much you can build housing anywhere else except for his local area. And what we see right now, right now in his ward, there is a proposal that has been put forward on Montague Road to construct, it was originally to construct 470 new homes for his residents.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension, seconded.
We have a motion for an extension of time, moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Yeah, okay. As I was saying, Mr Chair, there's a proposal on Montague Road to create 470 new homes in councillor Sri's area and also to create a new park as a result of that development as well, development proposal. Do you think councillor Sri would have supported the creation of new homes? Helping to bring down affordability and to make it more affordable for people to live in his ward?
Point of order, Chair.
Oh, sorry councillor Sri, you have a point of order?
Chair, this is getting to be borderline defamatory at this point. I don't have the ability to respond to the accusations that the mayor is making. So if the mayor is wanting to have an actual conversation about this, he should give me a right of reply. In a context where I don't have a right of reply and the mayor is continually defaming me, I think you need to draw the mayor back to the topic of the report. Otherwise the meeting's just going to get off track.
My answer to your point of order councillor Sri is the Lord Mayor has the right to go around the houses in relation to the ENC report. He's doing so, that's a right that's afforded to the Lord Mayor, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I would say councillor Sri, the truth is not defamatory, it is the truth. There is a difference. We know that you oppose this DA and you have been stirring up community dissent and you've been part of that community dissent against the creation of 470 new homes in your ward. And in fact, as a result of the community dissent led by you, the proponent has now reduced the size of the application down to 349, a reduction of 121 homes. They still propose to create some parkland as a result of this DA, but this example shows exactly what the problem is with the Labour-Greens' approach.
Point of order, Chair.
Because they say they care about housing affordability.
Lord Mayor, there's another point of order from councillor Sri.
I'm just wondering if the mayor will take a question about the impact that my objection to a development application actually has on the decision-making process.
Lord Mayor, will you take a question from councillor Sri? No.
I understand why councillor Sri is upset because for the very first time he's been called out and the farcical Greens' policy is being exposed for the sham that it is, for the absolute myth that it is. The idea that they want to see more housing affordability and they want to build a million new homes across Australia, yet they oppose everything. Every significant development that comes through, they oppose it. How can you build a million new homes if you oppose every single one of them? If you rile up your residents against every single proposal that comes in? How can you do that?
Point of order, Chair.
The answer is you can't.
Point of order councillor Sri.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted.
Now councillor Sri is likely to say, oh, out of the million new homes that we propose to build as a Greens' political party, 750,000 of them are government homes. He'll say that, he'll say that. But where are they going to put those 750,000 government homes? In the Gabba Ward? In the Gabba? I don't know, it sounds like a sham policy to me. Promising the world, yet every time they have the chance to show that they can support affordable housing and bringing the price of housing down or at least keeping it level like we saw from 2016 to 2020, they oppose it. They oppose it. And so let's have a real discussion about housing affordability here because as I said, it is not our responsibility to build government housing nor should it be. We're building enough state government infrastructure already. We're building, Brisbane Metro should have been built by the state government. We're building new bridges, they should have been built by the state government. The state government has been missing in action in every area of their responsibility and especially housing. And, you know, we have stepped up to the extent that we can step up, but to suggest that we should now be building government housing? I mean, that is just a step too far. That is a step too far and it just shows that Labour has abandoned their roots and that the Greens are offering nothing more than a sham policy. And if you drill down even just a little bit into their policy, you see that it is fake. It won't deliver anything. It provides fake hope to people when what in reality they do is they oppose housing developments that will help make housing more affordable in Brisbane. I don't know where councillor Sri thinks the million homes are going to be, but if his record is anything to go by, there won't be a single one of them in the Gabba Ward. There won't be a single one of them in the Gabba Ward where all the great infrastructure is. There is probably not another ward in the city that has better infrastructure than the Gabba Ward. And so by opposing the construction of new homes to increase the supply of housing in the Gabba Ward, he is only serving to help drive the price of housing up and up and up and locking out a generation of people from the hope of ownership and even more affecting the ability of renters to get a secure home and a secure lease. Because what we're seeing at the moment is housing prices have increased so much that pretty much the only people that can afford to buy them are people that already have a house or people that have moved from Sydney and Melbourne and sold an exorbitantly overpriced house and think that Brisbane looks cheap. And that locks out local people. And what we see is that properties in our market that were previously investment properties or rental properties are being sold and owner occupiers are moving in, many of them from Sydney and Melbourne. And then that's making it even harder for renters. So take a bow councillor Sri, take a bow Labour councillors. This is the impact of what you are doing in our city. This is making it harder for people to get into a home or to rent a home. This is a really important issue and it's about time that we had some facts on the table about what influences housing affordability. Because the rubbish that we've heard up until now is that the increase, that increasing the supply of housing does nothing to improve affordability. We know that is just not true and the facts and figures show it. Facts and figures show it. Now, what we have now is another challenging situation where even if you had more DAs coming in, the cost of building right now is increasing so rapidly that you're seeing a drop-off in the number of new building projects that are starting. So not only do you have the supply issue right now, you're going to see that exacerbated because construction prices are rising dramatically as well. So we need a new way here and we need to look at this approach differently and if we continue to have councils across Australia who are focused on opposing every development proposal that come in, then housing will not become more affordable in Australia and it won't become more affordable in Brisbane. I want my children to be able to afford a house in Brisbane, but unless we see a change in the approach, they won't be able to. They won't be able to. And unless we see a change in the approach, they won't even be able to rent anywhere in Brisbane either because there won't be any rental accommodation. And so this is an important issue. The Greens and Labour deserve to be called out on their extraordinary response, which actually makes housing more unaffordable and we will continue to point this out to people because in the end, housing is one of those things that everyone should have, whether it's a rental property or owning a home, as one of the basic tenements of our life. It's something, it provides security to people and it is something that is truly important to make sure that people have a healthy and well-adjusted life, to have a roof over their head. And so it is something we should care about and something we should talk about. Moving on. Oh, Mr Chair. Councillor Johnston may not care about housing affordability or people experiencing housing pressure, but we do. Last night, Victoria Bridge, Redcliffe Place were lit up in red to support the National Blood Donor Week. Organised by Red Cross, Blood Donor Week celebrates all blood donors and financial supporters and encourages members of the public to consider donating blood and plasma to those in need. Tonight, the Tropical Dome, Victoria Place, Redcliffe Place and Story Bridge will be lit up in ruby to support the eve of royal giving. the eve of Royal Giving Day. And this is the campaign organised by the Royal Brisbane Women's and Children's Hospital, a place where I was born, incidentally, and aims to raise awareness and funds for the hospital to fund new research and equipment. Tomorrow night, all of our assets will be lit up in purple to mark World Elder Abuse Day. This day takes place on the 15th of June every year, and is a day designated by the United Nations as an international day of action, and the whole world voices its opposition to the abuse of elders across the globe. On Thursday night, we'll light up the Tropical Dome, Story Bridge and Redcliffe Place, and Victoria Bridge in red and green to support Bowel Cancer Awareness Month. Regrettably, bowel cancer is Australia's second deadliest cancer, and the campaign raises awareness for Bowel Cancer Australia, an organisation who is dedicated to research, prevention and fundraising to treat this cancer. Also on Thursday night, we'll be lighting up the City Hall in red to celebrate the 25th Annual Red Frogs Gala, supporting the fantastic organisation, the Red Frogs, and they will be having a dinner here in City Hall. On Friday night, our Bridges and Redcliffe Place will be lit up in blue and red to support Hero For Heart Kids. Heart Kids is the only national not-for-profit organisation solely focused on supporting and advocating for people impacted by childhood heart disease, which is one of the largest causes of infant death in Australia. Saturday night, we'll see the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Redcliffe Place.
Look, Mayor, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
May I have an extension seconded?
We have a motion for an extension of time for the Lord Mayor, moved by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Saturday night, we'll see the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Redcliffe Place lit up in yellow to support You Are Not Alone and the Fun Run. The Fun Run is taking place in the CBD and aims to promote conversation among young people about how they are feeling, aiming to change statistics around youth mental health and suicide, and all profits will be donated to Lifeline to fund call centres around Queensland. And finally, on Sunday, our assets will be lit up in red to support World Sickle Cell Day. This day is an internationally recognised awareness day promoting equitable access to the treatment of those living with sickle cell disease, and to break down stigma in the community. I also just wanted to thank a couple of people who have made a great contribution to our city, and those people are Denver Beanland and Sue Rickaby. Denver Beanland finishes up as the Chair of the Heritage Advisory Committee at the end of the financial year. He has chaired this committee since August 2007, an incredibly long period of time, and he has helped save hundreds of local heritage places through this role, and adding those into the heritage register, and also making sure that Brisbane, some of Brisbane's oldest suburbs like Spring Hill and Kangaroo Point have properties that are now protected for the future. Denver Beanland was also a former Deputy Mayor of the Brisbane City Council, but he always points out to me that it was called Vice Mayor at the time, and so he was the Vice Mayor of Brisbane when Sally Ann Atkinson was the Lord Mayor. In addition to Denver's work as the Chair of the Heritage Advisory Committee, he's also contributed to recording Brisbane's history, and he's produced the book in 2016, Brisbane, Australia's New World City, which is a thorough history of Brisbane City Council up to that point. And so thank you to Denver for your service to the city of Brisbane, both as a former Vice Mayor, as a Chair of the Heritage Advisory Committee, and also as a historian, recording an important part of the council's history. I also wanted to thank Sue Rickaby, who is leaving council in the coming months. Sue started in council back in 2002, and has undertaken many management positions and played a critical role in this organisation. She is respected right across council for her long service and career in council. She's currently the Executive Manager of the Support Services branch of council, and I certainly wish her all of the best for the future. I know that Sue has been such a familiar face around the organisation, and in the different roles that she's held, has done a fantastic job. That started off way back in the early 2000s when she was Manager of Marketing and Communications, and that was actually under a previous administration at the time, and then moved on to Manager of Customer Services in the mid 2000s to the late 2000s, and then went on to become the Divisional Manager of City Business when that particular division existed as a division, and that was from October 2008 to March 2011. And then also, she was the Executive Manager of Shared Services in council as well from that point on. So Sue has done many important management roles in Brisbane City Council, and I want to thank her for a long service to the city and her commitment to the city. She's also played a critical role in the Local Disaster Coordination Centre, both in the 2011 floods, when she was a manager at the time, and also in the most recent floods in 2022. And there's not so many people left in council that have been through both floods. Sue is one of them, and we appreciated her contribution and her experience. Item A is the Suburban Enhancement Fund policy. We're making two simple but important changes to this policy. The first is a minor change to the deadline date each year for which people can lodge projects. Obviously, projects need to be lodged a little bit earlier in the lead-up to the end of the financial year. At the moment, the deadline is the 1st of May each year, and we're extending that date slightly to make it the 7th of May. So the new deadline is just giving people a little bit of extra time to get projects in before the end of the financial year. So that's the first change. And the second change is to allow for savings returned to ward budgets from projects completed to be reallocated to additional projects after the cut-off. So effectively, we're giving councillors some extra flexibility, where they've had an amount allocated to a particular project, and there has been savings on that project, so i.e. the cost of the project has been less than anticipated, they can reallocate those savings to another project without losing the money effectively. So giving councillors more flexibility on using those suburban enhancement funds. And, you know, this is an important way of ensuring that councils across Brisbane can deliver for the suburbs they represent with practical local projects that enhance the suburbs of Brisbane. Item B is the Contracts and Tendering Report for April 2022. In this report, 15 out of the 17 contracts awarded are awarded to local South East Queensland businesses, which is 88% of the contracts, exceeding our 80% target. In the financial year-to-date, we've seen over 480 contracts awarded to local businesses, which has equaled the total spend so far of $862 million with local businesses. So just think about the ongoing positive effect that that has in our community with all of that money being invested through local businesses to deliver services and projects for the people of Brisbane. It's a great outcome, and one that we are committed to, and one that we will continue to strive to achieve through our 80% local buy procurement target. Notable contracts in the particular report in front of us is the Ellison and Kirby Road Intersection Upgrade in Aspli. This intersection carries over 13,000 vehicles a day, and is currently managed by a stop sign. So that's, you know, that gives you an idea, 13,000 vehicles managed by a stop sign, good luck with that. So we're upgrading the intersection with signals, and this is all about making that intersection safer for all users, not just motorists, but also pedestrians and cyclists as well. Another project is the Kelvin Grove Road and Blamey Street Intersection Upgrade in Kelvin Grove, and this is about increasing the capacity for right-turn movements from Kelvin Grove Road. Footpath improvements for pedestrians will be made, and also improvements for cyclist safety will be made. And overall, it will increase the intersection capacity to help reduce congestion and improve travel time. Item C is a submission for an Infrastructure Charges Reduction Procedure for Eligible Organisations. Council each year introduces an Infrastructure Charges incentive to provide financial assistance to a range of organisations that deliver new or expanded facilities or services. And so this is effectively about supporting community organisations, charities, religious and sporting or recreational organisations who are upgrading facilities with a significant reduction in any infrastructure charges payable. Now, the current incentive is due to expire on the 30th of September this year, and each year, we bring through a policy that has an expiry date. And I have to say, when I saw this coming through, the very first question I asked was, why does this policy have an expiry date? This is something that we are committed to on an ongoing basis, and so I'm pleased to confirm and announce today that from now on, this is permanent. There is no expiry date. This is a permanent ongoing initiative of the Brisbane City Council and this team, and we will keep it going without any expiry date. And that gives those organisations the certainty that this particular reduction in charges is not mysteriously going to disappear one year. It will be there for the future, so they can plan ahead with certainty, knowing that we will support them with these type of projects. So that is a good outcome, and one that I'm sure all councillors will be happy to tell their community groups about. Item D is a major amendment to the city plan, Eight Mile Plains Neighbourhood Plan, and this has come through the chamber several times already. It's already been talked about quite a lot. I'm just about to run out of time, so I can't speak too long on it, but this is about making sure we take advantage of the opportunity that having Brisbane Metro in Eight Mile Plains will help deliver, and those high-frequency mass transit services that will run along the busway to Eight Mile Plains will help us facilitate some more activity along the corridor. And this neighbourhood plan is about supporting not only residents catching public transport, but supporting local jobs in that part of Brisbane as well. And so I commend this particular plan to the chamber.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. First, I see councillor Cassidy, first councillor Shree, you had a point of misrepresentation?
Thanks, Chair. The mayor lied and said that I had objected to every development in the Gabba Ward. That's untrue. There are quite a few projects that I've supported where I've been satisfied that they will improve housing affordability and are accompanied by sufficient infrastructure. So the mayor was completely incorrect on that point. Thanks.
Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. Listening to the Lord Mayor is very interesting over those last 30 or so minutes, the fact that he couldn't answer my question during question time, then attempted to take 20 minutes then to try and answer it. I suppose he's taken the approach to the best defense his offense, and in answering that question about housing affordability, he's decided to admit that he's done nothing over his time in office.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
The leader of the opposition is...
Point of order.
Point of order to you councillor.
Point of order to you. Thank you. The opposition leader is using this as an opportunity for a speech, just like councillor Shree. These aren't an opportunity to say whatever you wish at the conclusion of a speech. You can't just go on and on about how a previous speaker was completely wrong.
Thank you councillor Wines. I note your point of order. Councillor Cassidy, can I bring you to the report before us, please?
Thanks, Chair. I'll talk on these four items. It's just interesting to note that the Lord Mayor took 20 minutes to admit that he had got the issue totally and completely wrong when it came to housing affordability, and his plan is to continue to do the exact same thing.
Councillor Cassidy, to the points before us, please.
Which is very disappointing for our city. Just to the outset, I'd like item A and C taken, CERIADAM, and B and D, so A and C together, B and D together for voting.
Okay.
On A, the Suburban Enhancement Fund Policy, SEF policy, we will be supporting this item. Currently, only unallocated funds of up to $50,000 may be rolled over into the next financial year, and that, as the mayor said, that deadline was May 1. So any additional savings that come after that new date of May 7 on projects that are reaching completion shouldn't be lost into consolidated revenue for this Lord Mayor to waste. So we do support this item in making sure that all those SEF funds are retained in the local community rather than going into his advertising budget. So we'll be supporting item A. Item B, the Contracts and Tendering Report for April, again, we see some real clangers in here. Nearly $40 million is being spent on just one, just one of this LMP mayor's so-called green bridges. This is the bikeway extension on Breakfast Creek, which is costing rate payers about $260,000 per metre. It's the most expensive bridge in Australia, potentially the most expensive bridge in the world. And this is part of the Five Promised Green Bridges Programme. And when the mayor announced those five, people rightly thought they were probably getting five bridges across the Brisbane River. They didn't realise one of them was across a creek and was going to cost $260,000 per linear metre. But of course, we know that plan, that election commitment, was written on the back of a napkin and was worth about that much when it came to the crunch. He really obviously only intended to build two, which is something that I said from the outset, given the level of funding that he actually allocated to them. And lo and behold, what we have for us now is just two being built, well, one being built currently. We know that the Kangaroo Point Bridge is about to get underway, we think, although, given this Lord Mayor's track record, perhaps that one will be scrapped. We'll have half a bridge going nowhere. We see another issue here with the Indrapilly Roundabout Upgrade, another $2 million for that one. This is a road project that's blown out by $60 million before shovel has even hit the ground. And this administration and this political party, the LMP, call themselves responsible financial managers. That's the biggest joke that's ever been perpetrated on the people of Brisbane. When the people of Brisbane will see the rates rise coming tomorrow, and the Lord Mayor's tried to soften everyone up by saying it won't quite be, it won't quite be 6%, the average, although we know a lot of people will be hitting the cap at 7.5% in many suburbs around Brisbane, residents will know why. They'll just have to look at things like this. The Indrapilly Roundabout Project, before it even started, blew out by $60 million. We know the Metro, before it even started, blew out from $944 million to $1.7 billion. That's the reason people's rates are going up in Brisbane. Not to fund flood recovery, it's to fund the financial mismanagement of this LMP mayor. But there's $1 million for the Story Bridge restoration, too, another one of the LMP's black hole projects that's costing tens of millions of dollars more than it should have. And perhaps if they hadn't neglected basic maintenance works on that bridge for the last two decades, that restoration bill and our rates bill wouldn't be so high come tomorrow's budget. We see $1 million for bus stops in here, in these contracts as well, and perhaps finally, therefore, the people of Polara who've been waiting decades for services and are still going nowhere, thanks to the LMP, to their local LMP councillor Angela Owen and LMP Lord Mayor Adrian Schriner. Not only do they not have basic bus services and bus stops out there, the main road lacks drainage and curbing and channeling, it's riddled with potholes, and there's next to no footpaths in that rapidly growing suburb at all. It's a real shame that it has taken years of campaigning by residents just to get something as simple as some bus stops put in, but we're glad we've been able to join them to ensure that that now happens. And of course, we know the only reason the LMP are doing anything about it out there now and why they're scrambling to do something about it in Polara and, you know, ripping around with the pothole filling trucks after the news TV cameras have turned up, is because there's been some bad publicity for it. But that's a terrible way to do public policy and service delivery in a city like Brisbane, is to wait until you get some bad publicity and then finally do something about it. Last, but certainly not least, we see $7.5 million allocated to media advertising services. Now, when COVID hit, this LMP mayor cut curbside collection and public transport services as a response. And when the 2022 floods hit, this LMP mayor cuts suburban bikeway projects, parks, upgrades mosquito spraying community grants and pedestrian bridges. Well, there's one thing that he has never ever cut, Chair, and that's his advertising budget, his exorbitant and extraordinary advertising budget. And here in contracts today, we see another $7.5 million allocated to advertising and the LMP mayor's self-promotion. So it's very clear in these contracts before us, and it'll be very clear tomorrow as well. So it's very clear in these contracts before us, and it'll be very clear tomorrow as well, the way in which this LMP mayor spends residents' money and makes his priorities very clear. The priorities himself and in his city are very rarely the people in the suburbs. On clause C, excuse me for one moment. I've been holding that in. Council currently has a resolution to apply a reduction on infrastructure charges for not-for-profit organisations, including registered charitable organisations, community-based incorporated not-for-profits, sporting and rec organisations, ATO-recognised religious organisations and schools. So discounts are 75%, so maximum of $40,000 to $45,000. We support the clause today, making sure that those discounts continue for those organisations. But we believe even more could be done in this space. We should be seeing infrastructure charge discounts for housing providers, not for-profit community housing providers, as an incentive to increase affordable and social housing supply in this city. The infrastructure charges on a low-cost rental are extraordinary for providers like the Brisbane Housing Company and micro projects. And they can, in some cases, can in some cases mean the difference between whether a project proceeds or not. When Labour was in charge of City Hall, we invested $16 million into social and affordable housing and set up the Brisbane Housing Company. And over the last eighteen years, the LMP have invested just $500,000, and that's using their own figures. So it's not good enough, and more needs to be done in this space. And it's not good enough for the Lord Mayor to simply say it's somebody else's fault, whether it's the state government's fault, the federal government's fault, the Labour Party's fault, Greens Council's fault. He never takes any responsibility in this space, and he should be doing so much more. On clause D, the major amendment to the city plan, the Eight Mile Plains Gateway Neighbourhood Plan, we see next to no community engagement or consultation in this neighbourhood plan for us today. The draft plan received only 22 submissions, which is quite pathetic in terms of community engagement. The local councillor, Stephen Wong, has been missing in action for the last six months trying to secure a seat in the federal parliament. He failed in that endeavour and has also failed to be present for his community when a key neighbourhood plan was being developed. Consultation was only opened during November and December last year, when many residents would have been on holidays.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Can I move for an extension?
Second, we have a motion for an extension of time moved by councillor Cook and seconded by councillor Strunk. In favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. So while people were focusing on their families and having a break, that's when this administration decided to put out a neighbourhood plan, which is talking about the future of this community for the next generation, out to consultation over November and December. It's little, little wonder they had their local councillor running for a federal seat at the time. They're away on holidays while this consultation was happening. It's little wonder we only got 22 submissions on the draft plan back to council. So we don't, we don't really know if this plan is suitable for the local community because the LMP have made it as hard as possible for residents to make submissions and to know what is included in this neighbourhood plan. The neighbourhood plan is back before council today for approval, before it goes up to the relevant minister for adoption. But given, given by design, this LMP administration have excluded local residents from having a meaningful say about this plan, this isn't something that we'll be supporting today.
Thank you councillor Cassidy. Further speakers? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on items C and D. But before I start, could we ask for item B to be taken, seriatum, for vote?
B, seriatum, for voting? Okay.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'm just starting off. Item C, the Brisbane Infrastructure Charges Reduction Procedure for Eligible Organisations. Item C is the amendment to council's Infrastructure Charges Reduction Procedure to provide ongoing financial assistance to community groups and organisations that deliver essential services and facilities for the benefit of the community. Since the introduction of the incentive in August 2013, we have supported 180 organisations with a reduction of up to 75% of infrastructure charges levied for development approvals. The incentive is due to expire on the 30th of September 2022, and we are proposing to amend the procedure to permanently remove the expiry date to provide ongoing financial support for these groups. Organisations that are eligible and have been supported through the reduction programme include charitable organisations like the Salvation Army and Red Cross, not-for-profit community-based organisations such as senior citizens groups, environmental groups, cultural and other welfare organisations, sporting clubs, churches and religious organisations and schools and other eligible training groups. A lot of these groups are volunteer-led and provide invaluable services to the community. This is just one way we can continue to support them financially, particularly through the rebuild and recovery after what's been a difficult couple of years with the pandemic and recent floods. And I commend that to the chamber and glad to hear that the opposition will be supporting it. Now, moving on to item D, which is the major amendment to city plan 2014, the Eight Mile Plains Neighbourhood Plan. The Eight Mile Plains Gateway Neighbourhood Plan area incorporates parts of Eight Mile Plains and Rochdale and is identified as a key economic growth area in Brisbane, the city's southern anchor. Located close to major public transport nodes, including the future Brisbane Metro Station and the Rochdale Busway Station, this plan capitalises on the significant infrastructure investment in this area to support future jobs and housing growth over the next ten years and beyond. The Brisbane Technology Park supports a diverse mix of businesses and industries with a high concentration of advanced manufacturing, research and tech-based industries. The plan will continue to support the ongoing development of this important employment cluster, creating thousands of new jobs and further strengthening Brisbane's reputation as a hub for innovation and economic activity. Zoning changes proposed in the Brisbane Technology Park will support a greater mix of office, research and technology, light industry and service industry uses, and introduces other uses that support the local workforce and night-time economy, including facilities such as food and beverage users, community, education and healthcare services, and indoor sport and recreation. Brisbane's industrial landscape is changing, and with this, we need to acknowledge that industries that are knowledge-based, technology-based and based around innovation need particular working environments to establish the businesses of the future. It's important to ensure that we get a good mix of business uses in these environments, but also that they support the lifestyle and amenity of the local workforce. Greater housing choice will also be facilitated in key locations close to the Eight Mile Plains Busway Station and the future Metro Station, as well as near the future Rochdale Busway Station further up Logan Road and Miller's Road in the south, supporting a projected population increase of around 2,000 new residents over the life of the plan. The state government's new proposed satellite hospital at Levington Road will be facilitated through a zoning change to community facilities, healthcare purposes, and will continue, and we will continue discussions with the state to ensure that adequate local infrastructure upgrades are delivered as part of this project to appropriately service the area, something I know councillor Wines will be prioritising. There are several established places of worship throughout the plan area, and these are recognised through zoning changes that will facilitate their ongoing operations. The draft neighbourhood plan was released for community consultation from the 18th of November to the 16th of December 2021, and council received 65 submissions. And this feedback has been addressed through the final version of the plan. And I did want to turn to the points that councillor Cassidy made earlier, because he did the same thing with the Sandgate Neighbourhood Plan, where he questioned the consultation. Now, the submissions that people make is obviously a function of their desire to contribute to the process, but there, there's no shortage of engagement with the community. So some of the stats, you know, an online issue survey, 283 responses, interactive mapping responses, 204, three community planning team meetings, two information kiosks, 4,384 newsletters sent out to residents, there was an email campaign. So look, absolutely no shortage of engagement. And look, ultimately, if residents choose to respond, it will be driven by their desire to contribute to the process. So in conclusion, I'd like to thank councillor Wong for his ongoing support and collaboration throughout this project. It's encouraging to see what can be achieved when you have a local councillor who's dedicated to championing their local communities and what they want to achieve. This is a plan that supports additional housing, including affordable housing options. It leverages transport infrastructure and enhances economic development. The final plan will now progress to the state government for their final state interest check and approval to adopt, and I look forward to bringing this plan back through the chamber in the future for final adoption in city plan.
Further speakers? Are you, councillor Johnson, you have a point of order or are you speaking?
I have a point of order, that's why I said point of order.
Okay.
Thank you. It's not disgusting to stand up and under the meeting's local law say point of order when I have a point of order. And it was councillor Hammond, are you going to do anything about that?
I, I didn't hear any comments, sorry.
I can hear it from here.
Well, I was looking at you. And you're on your feet, you have a point of order? Please proceed.
You must address the behaviour of the LMP councillors when they do this. It's not appropriate. My point of order is, there are five, there are five matters in this paper before us today that state one offer received. It doesn't say who the contractor is and how are we supposed to declare a conflict of interest if we don't know who these contracts are being awarded to?
Is this in relation to item B?
Yes, item B in the report for contracts.
I don't believe there's a conflict of interest issue here, councillor Johnson?
Well, Mr Chairman, it's our responsibility, as you warned us at the beginning of the meeting, to declare if we have a conflict of interest. And I'm saying to you that there are five contracts before us today worth millions of dollars that don't say who the contracts are being awarded to. I've been here 14 years, that's unusual.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
And I need that information so that I can make a proper declaration under the rules.
Point of order, councillor.
I'm happy to clarify, ours has been the case many, many years, on contracts and tendering. They are decided, they have been awarded. This is a report from strategic procurement. It is not a decision on this contracts and tendering. It is noting the report in the E and C.
Thank you. I believe that to be the case. This is a report of expenditures that have already been undertaken, no decisions are required, therefore there's no conflict of interest. Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on clause D in regards to the neighbourhood plan for Eight Mile Plains and, and parts of Rochdale, from what the Chair has said. Listen, I wish councillor Wong well when it comes to this neighbourhood plan. Neighbourhood plans out my way, which were put down some years ago, right? Yes, but, but under this, under this administration some years ago, really aren't worth the paper they're written on, quite frankly. And I just hope that this particular neighbourhood plan actually is followed because the ones in my area, like Richlands and Doondella, and Ellangrave for that matter, which is a very old one, all it takes is one, one development, which wasn't part of the neighbourhood plan, to change the whole complexity of the neighbourhood plan. Because once you make a, once you set a precedence, the game's up. They can do whatever they want in this particular, in a particular type of development. And in my area, and I, I hope you don't experience it down there, is the high-density development that, that's happened in, in my, my neck of the woods, right? Which the, the people say of, of Doondella, and I'm sure the people of, of Brown's Plains, or not Brown's Plains, Eight Mile Plains, sorry, I apologise, are thinking that, you know, this neighbourhood plan is going to be something that's, you know, there for a number of years, there for quite a few years. And, and their lifestyle is not going to be impacted if that neighbourhood plan is followed. But unfortunately, what we see right across, right across Brisbane, right, is a lot of the neighbourhood plans, right, and not just in, in, in the ALP wards or in independents or Greens wards, these plans are not followed. And they're not worth the paper they're written on. It's like a wish list, almost. And, and we heard that last week councillor Cassidy talking about the Sandgate one. And, and, and even with, even with consultation, right, sometimes those planes don't reflect the, the wishes of the actual people in, that they're going to, that are going to be living in those areas. So I, I also want to take exception to the, what the Lord Mayor said last week in regards to when he was raising the, or talking about the Sandgate Neighbourhood Plan, and he made a statement that says, we see from time, we see time and time again, the councillors on the other side, all of them actively opposing any kind of development that happens in their area. And I take great exception for that because, quite frankly, most, 90% of the development that comes across my desk that I can make comment on, right, even individual houses from time to time, right, I have no problem with that. Whether they be houses or, or, or multi-complexes, right, so long as they have a, so long as they have a, they're developing a complex, for instance, that actually is livable, right, that people can recreate as well, but so often, it doesn't happen. So often, we allow one, two, 300 townhouses to be developed, and, and there's no recreational space within the complex. So I really take great exception with that, of that. All the councillors on this side, and I'm sure the councillors on the other side as well, object to some types of development, right? And, but for the most part, we embrace development, the right type of development, those developments that actually, people can actually, families, individuals and couples can thrive in, right? And it's not just a bed to sleep in, or a space to sleep in of a night time, that they can actually live in a livable, livable space. So I just wish the Lord Mayor would not be so loose with the truth when it comes to making blanket statements about, about what we on this side believe and do, because it really doesn't do him any, any favours, really, in the eyes of the people that would be watching here, because they know that those sort of statements are just wrong and untruthful, and he should really desist from doing so. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Wong.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item D of the E and C report, on major amendment to city plan 2014, Eight Mile Plains Gateway Neighbourhood Plan. Mr Chair, Eight Mile Plains is a place, suburb with diverse religious representation, whether it's the Bosnian mosque, Sikh temple, Korean gospel church or the Chinese tower temple. This is a shining example of a multi-faith community in our city. Eight Mile Plains is also a significant high-tech and employment hub for our city. The Brisbane Technology Park is right at the centre of Eight Mile Plains, alongside with RICQ head office, conveniently located on the other side of Logan Road. Eight Mile Plains is home to a transport junction where the Gateway Motorway, South East Freeway and Logan Road intersect, not to mention the two metro stations included in this neighbourhood plan. Eight Mile Plains has been identified by Brisbane City Council as one of our city's priority global precincts. With all the advantages I just mentioned, Eight Mile Plains is definitely a precinct that we need to plan well to ensure it will continue to play a key role in the future growth of our city. The neighbourhood plan is aimed at providing a framework for the continuous prosperity of Eight Mile Plains and emphasising its advantages as both a central transport location and economic hub and a multicultural community. I've attended a number of public consultations of this neighbourhood plan. In fact, I've probably attended all of them, and I'm glad to see feedback from local businesses and residents were taken on board by the planning team. I find it interesting to hear from the leader of the opposition, who probably never been to Eight Mile Plains, and talk about, you know, he, he know about all these things. But I think I can tell you that one of the reasons we have so limited response...
Excuse me, councillor Wong, I have a point of order from councillor Shree.
Well, councillor Wong take a question about whether he really believes that the opposition has never been to Eight Mile Plains.
Let's start with whether or not he'll take a question. Councillor Wong, will you take a question from councillor Shree? Councillor Wong, will you take a question from councillor Sri?
No, I won't take a lesson from the Greens council.
Thank you councillor Wong.
Yeah, thank you.
I can confirm I've been there.
Councillor Cassidy, please don't shout out.
Well, if you have been there, you would know, the reason there were only limited submissions was because we did it right from the beginning and we did well. So that's why the residents came back to us with minor issues that they wants to change in this neighbourhood plan and also I probably learned from councillor Strunk, oh look, the reason, yeah, well I agree with councillor Strunk, neighbourhood plans not just provide people with place to sleep, but Amal Plains Gateway Neighbourhood Plan actually provide our city with a future growth in areas like technology, housing affordability, housing choices and also economic development. So I'm sure this is something that is going to be good for the local area and good for our city. And in fact, the biggest concern from the residents was the satellite hospital, which was a politically driven decision. Yep, dumped to us in the last minutes and without any impact studies on noises, on traffic and also the people think there are lack of infrastructure support for this satellite hospital. So, look, the neighbourhood plan will continue the vibrant and robust development of the area and I look forward to see the progress and prosperity that will be delivered to Amal Plains by this neighbourhood plan and I will welcome the opposition councillors, if you get the time, come and have a look, you'll see it is totally different to what you are saying, the untruth you are giving to this chamber and I commend this item to the chamber.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks Chair, just on item C regarding the infrastructure charges reduction procedure for eligible organisations, I just wanted to place on the record that while I do support this item, I have some concerns about the level of discretion it introduces or it continues to allow, particularly in respect of religious organisations and schools. I think there are strong cases to be made that sometimes it's appropriate to offer infrastructure charges to support non-profit projects to get off the ground, but I do have concerns that in some cases, for example, a wealthy private school might be given infrastructure charges to deliver a development project that doesn't really benefit the broader community. It might, for example, improve access to like private school sporting facilities that benefit the students who go to that school, but there's no broader benefit to the public necessarily and I think we see the same with some of the religious organisation development applications where, sure, if the development is creating more green space or community facilities that can be used by the broader community, then there's definitely a case for infrastructure charge reductions and waivers, but I would be cautious about situations where there's not a broader dispersed benefit to the general public and one such example that springs to mind is the St Vincent's Hospital development application in my area at the moment where St Vincent's Hospital is a religious organisation but it's proposing to undertake a significant component of basically high-density, high-end apartment construction on its site. That particular style of development is essentially privatising land that was originally set aside for community purposes and doesn't really have a broader public benefit, it's simply a way for the St Vincent's organisation to make a lot of money and in those contexts I would be cautious about supporting infrastructure charges reductions because I think we do need the money to pay for the infrastructure to cater for that new development and that new growth. So, I'm not dogmatic about this stuff and I don't want to overstate the issue, but I would hope that the council is quite cautious and looks closely at these development applications rather than just rubber stamping them and saying that every development undertaken by a school or a religious organisation should be automatically eligible for the infrastructure charge discounts. A consistent problem we've seen in council over the last few years is that, for example, there might be a new private school or even a public school or a major school redevelopment that introduces more traffic into an area and then the council says, oh, but we don't have the money to pay for the pedestrian crossings or the intersection upgrades to cater for this development and that's partly arising because we're not collecting enough infrastructure charges from those kinds of projects. So, I do support the clause C and the broad intention of the policy, I just want to make sure, caution for public servants who are looking at this stuff in future, that we actually look closely at whether the individual developments in question are actually benefiting the public and deserve to have an infrastructure charge reduction. It shouldn't be a one-size-fits-all approach, it should be a nuanced question where we analyse the specifics of each proposal and decide whether it's actually justified. I'm particularly, I focus mostly on religious and school organisations, but I should point out that I think the same applies for certain sporting body development applications where what they're actually building is facilities for liquor sales or gaming etc. I think it would be pretty ridiculous if, for example, the council was offering infrastructure charge discounts so that sports club could build a room for more poker machines, that's not something that I would want to see infrastructure charge discounts offered for. So I think we need to be looking really carefully at exactly what kinds of development are involved rather than just saying, yeah, yeah, we'll waive this fee for you because ultimately it's still the rate payer that has to pay for that infrastructure charge. One way or another, the infrastructure has to be paid for and frankly, I would rather that the organisations that are profiting from these developments would be footing the bill rather than the broader public in the general sense. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Sure. Yes, I rise to speak on all the items before us today. Firstly, just with respect to item AP250, I note that no one's answered my question regarding this matter, which is to find out whether any councillors are being affected by the, being affected by the change in policy and it would have been useful, I mean the Lord Mayor's not here, he's not here to, you know, shepherd his own E and C report through the council today and we don't have that information, it's not been provided by the relevant chair who could have stood up and given it and it's a simple question. I mean, what would have been better obviously is for councillors to have been consulted about this because the policy affects how we do our jobs, it is directly related to how we do our jobs, but of course it was just announced through the E and C committee and then brought to this chamber and no one has had the courtesy to respond and answer the questions that are brought up, which I think is very disappointing. Presumably this will be helpful, but again, I have unfortunately seen twice in my time as a councillor, this council take funding out of Tennyson Ward and give it to other wards. Now, the funding in what was the original trust fund and now the SEF is pretty much the only funds council gives Tennyson Ward each year, very occasionally there's a little bit of extra money for some other parks projects, for example, there is a dog park project, oh I'm sorry, that'll probably be next year now because it started, but you know, I don't know whether it's actually going to be paid for this year or next year. But this funding is really critical, it is how we pretty much upgrade parks, footpaths and now unfortunately we also have to do traffic stuff with the same amount of money. So, I think that probably the better outcome here would have been to say consult with the people who are responsible for administering the policy. I mean, that's generally how policies work, that you speak to the people who are involved with the formulation of the policy and you do some consultation with them and you check and say, well, are there any issues here? But I gather we don't deserve any consultation as councillors about a policy that affects us on an everyday basis. That's my first observation and that sort of reflects the whole problem with the LNP council at the moment, that they are just doing what they want to do, they lack transparency and they lack any kind of respectful consultation with councillors about matters that impact directly on their wards and the administration of funds under their control and I think that is incredibly disappointing. There is a problem with the way the SEF projects are being accounted for, we do not know when savings are being realised in the budget, they can often spill from year to year and they can often be found a year or 18 months after, it's a very long time between when a project is finalised and when the savings are realised. So, certainly there may be some administrative issues here that need to be resolved, but it would have been better if this council had have done some basic consultation with the councillors who are responsible for the administration of this policy. It, you know, it comes down to us and I just, I honestly can't believe that no one thought that it should be something that should be circulated and discussed with the councillors. We are the stakeholders of this policy and it's just been brought in with very little explanation and the questions unanswered. With respect to item two, I'm very worried about the deputy mayor, she seems to be unable to breathe properly. Mr Chairman, I notice she's been coughing right through my speeches today and I'm very concerned about her health, perhaps she needs to step out and have a glass of water.
Councillor Johnston, inappropriate, please, continue.
Point of order, Mr Chair, that was truly disrespectful for someone that is struggling, we're all struggling with coals at the moment, so I would ask that councillor Johnston withdraws that comment.
Councillor Johnston, that really wasn't necessary.
You want me to withdraw that I'm concerned about the deputy mayor coughing all the way through the council meeting and that perhaps she should step out and get a glass of water? I'm happy to withdraw that. Goodness me. I mean, I'm called disgusting, but that doesn't get withdrawn. Is that, is that okay with you, Mr Chairman?
Councillor Johnston.
That councillor Hammond stood up and called me disgusting, but that didn't have to be withdrawn.
Councillor Johnston, you're reading into your speech time.
I'm just checking, I just literally cannot understand the rules as you apply them. It's inappropriate for the Lord Mayor, it's not inappropriate for the Lord Mayor to call someone a liar, but it's inappropriate for me to be concerned about it.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you councillor.
Can I just say, Mr Chair, that there's been a lot of talk in this chamber about respect and there is no respect being shown by the current speaker and I ask that you bring that speaker back to a respectful way of dealing with the chamber.
Councillor Johnston, you're reading in your speaking time, I suggest you get on with it.
Well, okay, as long as the deputy mayor is okay. Now, I'm arising on item B, which is the contracts and tendering report, I won't be supporting this item. I can see that this LNP administration has stopped governing for the city, it stopped a long time ago, but it's absolutely making no pretence of governing for the city any longer, it is only governing for itself and there is no better example than the projects that are listed on the contracts before us today. There are 14 infrastructure projects that are listed, 11 of them are in LNP wards, two of them are in the Greens ward, there are no projects in the ALP wards and none in Tennyson Ward, there is one citywide project. For the month of April, for the whole month of April, the LNP administration did not approve a single infrastructure project other than in their own wards or councillor Sri's ward. That's a huge chunk of the city that is being deliberately neglected by this LNP administration who are governing for themselves and not for the whole city and that is the oath that they swore to do, they've simply stopped doing it. And the problem with what they are doing is that when they pork barrel their own wards like they're doing, they over egg the pudding. Inogra is the best example of all of that, I mean, that project was a debacle from the very beginning and now it's been scrapped. But what we see before us today is simply this administration failing to govern for the whole city and simply governing for itself. I note that there's a huge amount of expenditure in the Walter Tail Award, I don't know that that's going to help. I think at this point, if you missed what happened when Michael Berkman got elected and you missed what happened when the federal Greens, I can't think of her name just off the top of my head now, but the federal Greens lady just got elected and beat Julian Simmons, what was going on in those areas, both with Scott Emerson and Julian Simmons is, they kept promising and over-promising and over-promising and over-promising and it's not projects that people want. I suspect councillor Mackay's office would be inundated with complaints about the botched Mogul Road project, which is not a surprise to me, it was never really about dealing with the north-south corridor, it is only about dealing with the east-west corridor. But what the LNP forgot is, a huge chunk of the Walter Tail Award has to actually use Coonan Street. So my residents know they got done over because it was very clear to me and that was something that we publicly discussed, but I suspect that councillor Mackay's residents are finding it out first hand right now and I suspect he'll find out a little bit more come 2024. It's really interesting, I think, and I presume he'll speak after afternoon tea, but there's a, almost, it's a bit over half a million dollars for a riverbank stabilisation project at Guyat Park, St Lucia. Now, I suspect that probably one of the most damaged parks in all of Brisbane would be Cacto-Blastus Corner and there is absolutely not a single cent for it, I don't think the geotechnical investigations have finished, it doesn't appear to me that any budgeting's been done to rectify what is, it's an extraordinary landslide on the Brisbane River at Sherwood, it's damaged houses, they're unlivable, it's damaged stormwater drainage, it's damaged the sewer, it's split the park in half and there are other major landslips. So, I note that there's $544,000 for Guyat Park and I look forward to there being that much or more for Sherwood to fix Cacto-Blastus Corner and also up off the old Montrose site where there's been a significant landslide and it's exposed extremely poor development practices from the subdivision of Montrose a few years ago when Matthew Burke was the councillor and all this construction weight slid out from under the houses and down the riverbank towards the river, all the old clay pipes, all the old construction material.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Any further speakers? No further speakers. We now move to the vote on this motion, we have A and C together, A and C, I now move for the vote in favour of, or against.
Point of order.
A and C, point of order to you councillor Johnston.
I just, I just note, Mr Chairman, that religiously, religiously for 14 years, that you and the LNP have said that the clerks must have breaks, I paused before my speech because I thought councillor Landers would get up for afternoon tea and she didn't and now I'm just wondering why we're not going to the afternoon tea break.
Councillor Johnston, this isn't a point of order, we can get to the, we can take afternoon tea break at any time, at or about three o'clock and we're moving to the vote on the E and C report. All in favour of item A and C, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Item B, all in favour of item B in the E and C report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division second.
Division has been called by deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers in regards to the vote on item B in the E and C report. Please ring the bells, ayes to my right, noes to the left. Clerks, please read the results. Councillor Cassidy, can I take you as an abstention with your colleagues, is that correct?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, clerks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour, zero against and four abstentions.
Thank you councillors, please resume your seats. We now move.
Five abstentions, Chair.
Five, one, two, three, four, five, five abstentions, did you get that? Thank you. Yep, we got five.
The clerks said four.
Did you say four or five? Did you say four or five? Okay, can we read the results again, please? I'm sorry. Thank you councillor Cassidy.
Mister Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being eighteen in favour, zero against and five abstentions.
Thank you. That's for the record. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. Councillors, we now move to the vote on item D in the E and C report. Item D, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division second.
Division called by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. Please ring the bells, ayes to my right, noes to the left. Thank you. Clerks, please read the results.
Mister Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being eighteen in favour, zero against and five abstentions.
Five abstentions, thank you. Please return to your seats. Point of order councillor Landers.
Mister Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Thank you. Have a motion for an afternoon tea break moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton. Afternoon tea break, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Deputy Mayor, Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I move the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, held on Tuesday the 7th of June 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday 7 June 2022 be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair. And first of all, this week I'd like to go through the fantastic workshops that are free to Brisbane businesses at the Brisbane Business Hub over the coming week. From, what's the day-to-day? Time flies, fourteenth, tomorrow's the fifteenth. So tomorrow morning at nine AM, we have business continuity and data recovery, something that's pretty important for businesses that may have been affected by the flood, what they need to know about disaster recovery and the distribution of your IT, infrastructure and business, that's being held by Veracity. On Thursday in the morning, growing health and thr- healthy and thriving teams, a proactive workshop teaching participants how to create a proactive environment for leaders to converge their passion and clarity personally and professionally from the Stone Creative Group. Then we've got an on the couch on Thursday afternoon at five thirty with Matt Mackay. He is an inspiring Australian footballer, a socceru raw legend. Oh my goodness, where's councillor coming when you need him? I'm sure he'd love to come along. He is the co-founder of a successful e-commerce business, Freddie and Co. And we're delighted to welcome Matt onto the couch accompanied by Simon Dell, CEO of Simo. And Matt will share challenges faced when transitioning from sport to business and the key learnings he had about building a profitable and sellable e-commerce building. And then lastly, on the twenty-first, five o'clock, we have Living Without Fingerprints, A Point in Time. That's next Tuesday night, which is an inspirational capture with John Weeks, who's travelled to sixty-five countries. He's known as the Flying Wine Maker with a global wine-making consultancy and he is an inspiring leader about optimism, resilience and guided support for those who cannot make a mark on society or lack the courage to try, being adversely affected by trauma. So that is next Tuesday night. So please get onto thebusinessinbrisbane.com.au to make sure you can share that with your business communities. I'd also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge one of the managers within my portfolio, the manager of International Relations and Multicultural Affairs, Nicole Andronakis. Recently, Nicole was honoured with a Knight of the Order of the Star of Italy in recognition of her contribution to Brisbane and its multicultural community. Now, this is something that should not be taken lightly. It is recommended by the Italian consulate, but it has to be approved by the Italian president. So I would like to congratulate Miss Andronakis and fully support the Italian consulate in their recommendation. I know there are many other community and multicultural groups across Brisbane that appreciate Nicole and the rest of the International Relations and Multi Affairs team and the hard work that they do on making such a beautifully diverse Brisbane, such a beautifully inclusive Brisbane as well. On the committee report last week, we looked at Brand Brisbane and we had the head of marketing from Brisbane Economic Development Agency came in to provide an update on our Destination Brand project. It's been a project over the last eighteen months where there was a recognition that some of our campaigns were looking a little bit one-dimensional. We didn't have an ID that was being recognised interstate or overseas. So they worked through with the marketing team and some other contractors, did a lot of consultation about what Brisbane should look like and the actual research was presented to committee last week. So it's a beautiful creative ideation, beautifully brightly coloured, Jacaranda, Morton Bay Blue, Eucalyptus Green. There's a very clear editorial style that is featuring bright colours, bold infographics and slogans and labels that people can start to recognise as the tourism economy brand for Brisbane. Now, those ads are not ones that we will see here necessarily in Brisbane because they are predominantly going interstate, particularly in our colder climates at the moment when it's still kind of nice up here. We've had a bit of colder climes recently as well and overseas as we're seeing those direct flights coming back into Brisbane as well. The whole idea of the style was to make sure that it was adaptable and we were shown three examples of Visit Brisbane rebranding that they will be doing and there was some very lively engagement and conversation about the brand destination. I recommend the report to the chamber.
Thank you. councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Listen, I was quite interested in actually the presentation that was, took place last week. Unfortunately, I was away ill, so I wasn't able to slip into the committee meeting, which is just after planning. So I did the second best thing. I just had a look at the presentation, the text presentation. There wasn't any other presentation that actually came through with the reports this week, so I don't know if.
Have you sent that through?
Sorry?
I'm having to send that through.
Thank you.
There's a lot visual in the report.
Thank you. I'll take that in objection, thank you. Okay, so I went through and just had a look through and of course, in a previous life, I was in retail and I really enjoyed marketing and what you can do and how you put it all together, even though it was, you know, it was a retail, small marketing, small marketing opportunity for me. This is, of course, all of Brisbane. So wanted to see what the experts said and what, where we were going to go, where we're going to go in the future. So, but in the first, in the first, I suppose it's the second item, right, that brought me, sort of brought me to, brought me to a screeching halt and said, rebranding Brisbane to Visit Brisbane and Choose Brisbane. And I thought, that's not really very inspiring or, I suppose it can be considered authentic, but it really doesn't do much, I don't think, as a campaign, right, to engender much enthusiasm in regards to trying to sell Brisbane. And that's what we're trying to sell, of course, Brisbane, which is the future Olympic City in 2032. So Visit Brisbane, Choose Brisbane as a marketing campaign. Maybe it should be like it was for Queensland, Destination Brisbane, or I Choose Brisbane, right, which really stimulates a little bit more curiosity and immediacy when deciding what you want to do, where you want to, where you want to travel to, whether you're coming from interstate or overseas. So I don't know if the growing guys and girls on the TV programme would be really enthused with this sort of campaign, campaign that we're proposing. But again, we hire the experts and I just hope Big Fish and the rebranding is up to the task. Hopefully they are because we need to really promote this city. But if we had a look at what they, what they said about it, and of course the deputy mayor did allude to this, and that is with the rebranding, right, the previous, I suppose it was a little bit, what was the word I used here? A little bit of an indictment of what they said that our previous campaigns or campaign or campaigns over the last twenty years that were, as you say, one-dimensional, right, and didn't really, weren't really up to the job of promoting Brisbane. And I would, I would sort of disagree with that to a little extent. I think we've done some good, some good work in promoting Brisbane, but it was a bit of an indictment when you consider the hundred, or sorry, the tens of millions of dollars that we have spent over the last twenty years promoting this city and to give a critique, right, that, that says that it was, it was, it was indicated that the existing branding, right, was one-dimensional and lacked vision and identity and not esteemed or highly regarded. Well, I'll tell you what, if I'd have been on that committee, sitting and listening to the presentation, I'd be asking all sorts of questions about that one because that's really a bit of indictment on this, on this administration over the last twenty years, really, when you consider how much we've, how much we've expended in promoting Brisbane. The other thing that really stood out for me as well was that we interviewed twenty local businesses in regards to this, in regards to the rebranding and the process over the last eighteen months. And it occurred to me that twenty businesses, not a heck of a lot, to be asking an opinion of what you think about writing Brisbane and how they, what ideas they have in regards to this. And so I worked out twenty businesses, that's probably more than twenty, there's probably more than twenty industries that have skin in the games when it comes to Brisbane, whether it be travel or transport, accommodation, retail, education, sports, recreational food media and a number of others, subgroups as well. So I just don't think that that's really a big sample of what, what people or businesses would think in regards to rebranding Brisbane and going forward. So I would think that you would probably need a little bit more data in this area because some businesses, whether, whether it be even a cultural group or organisation, a cultural organisation, would have a difference, with different ideas when it comes to trying to get people to visit Brisbane and enjoy what we have here, which I've enjoyed over the last number of years myself. I didn't want to move to any other city because Brisbane is my chosen, chosen home. So I just, I just wanted to make those few comments in regards to the presentation. I look forward to seeing the, the bigger presentation, the visual presentation that the deputy mayor said that she's happy to send me. But I just, I just hope the rebranding goes well. I look forward to seeing the responses that we're going to get from that rebranding and just hope that it's actually not one-dimensional and actually is, is very enticing for people to come to the city that we all love. And I'll finish my comments there. Chair.
Any further speakers? Deputy Mayor.
Look, thank you councillor Strunk and I wish you could have been there last week because you would have seen the enthusiasm that our head of marketing presented because I think there was a little bit of a misunderstanding in some of the lines on how the summary of the committee presentation came through. So first of all, this is a rebranding of Visit Brisbane and Choose Brisbane. So yes, you're right, Choose Brisbane and Visit Brisbane were the old brands and this is the rebranding. So that is what, exactly what they've come up with. It is a little bit one-dimensional and just saying Choose Brisbane or Visit Brisbane. So they've come up with an editorial styles that can be come and play in Brisbane, come and work in Brisbane, come and stay in Brisbane, all different types of dimensions on that. Now, there was definitely no aspersions cast on anything we've done in the past because we've had some fantastic campaigns, again, I agree with you, but our last campaign, which is everything's changed and nothing's different, well, everything's now changed and everything's different in the last two years. So we really did need to move on from that. And we did have, as it says in paragraph three, a big power imbalance with Destination Queensland. So the reality is TEQ does a fantastic job in supporting Queensland and tourism and the visitor economy in Queensland, but they are extremely loathe to say the B word, which is Brisbane. So we are very, very clear that we are trying to get Brisbane and to all of our regional tourism operators that we work with, they also know that Brisbane is the name for them, whether they live in Ipswich or Sunshine Coast or Redlands or Scenic Rim, you have to fly into Brisbane Airport. So they are all about making sure that it is Brisbane and it is Brisbane branding. So the recent one, we're trying to line up with Destination Queensland as well, you may have seen it if you've been looking at the Sydney Morning Herald or things outside, is Alive with Opportunity. So that's the one that the Destination Queensland branding have been using and we've also been using the word alive and live whenever we can as well. And Brisbane It's Better With You is another one that we've been doing recently. But the concept of this branding, and I am happy to, I will send on the concepts that we had last week, is about the colouring, the font, the editorial, so we can get that one image and whatever it says, we've got to look for what our look is. And that's what we were presented in committee last week and I think the team have done an amazing job. Big Fish were the actual campaign editors of it and they have done an amazing job. And those twenty local businesses would have been in destination economy. So not a cross, this is literally to get people in, stay a couple of nights and spend some money for our locals. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. We now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. councillor Murphy, Transport Committee report, please.
Chair, thanks. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 7th of June 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday 7 June 2022 be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Firstly, before I get to the committee report, I just had, I had to pick up on something that was mentioned during the E and C debate just before, which was a comment that councillor Cassidy made, where he said that the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge was, quote, "the most expensive bridge project in the world", unquote. So, and Chair, you know, we both know the current Green Bridges Programme Director, Jim Heffernan, he would love to make that claim, I'm sure, about the programme, but the reality is that the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, as good as it is, is nowhere near the most expensive bridge in the world. Some other bridges that you might want to consider in that list and would you believe, Chair, Wikipedia actually keeps a top ten most expensive bridge projects in the world page? And, you know, you should never trust Wikipedia as a sole source, you should use it, but make sure you verify the sources. So, for example, the eastern span replacement of the San Francisco Oakland Bay Bridge, a road bridge in San Francisco, six point four billion dollars. The Akashi Kakio Bridge in Kobe, Japan, five billion dollars, constructed actually, would you believe, in nineteen eighty-eight, the year of my birth, Chair. The Evergreen Point Floating Bridge, a road bridge connecting Seattle and Medina, Washington in the United States, four point five six billion dollars, completed in twenty sixteen. The fourth mainland bridge, which connects the Akororu and Lechi cities of Lagos State, Chair, four point two billion dollars. It's not yet completed, it's been under construction since twenty eighteen. The, I won't name all of them, Chair, but there's a couple of others in here, the Crimean Bridge, which is a road and rail bridge in Ukraine, three point seven billion dollars. And rounding it out, getting down to the ten of the top ten, Chair, the Ruski Bridge, a road bridge in Vladivostok, one point one billion dollars. So we haven't even gotten out of the billion-dollar bridges before we exit the top ten. So whilst I would love to be building a billion-dollar bridge, Chair, no, Kangaroo Point Green Bridge does not take the cake as the most expensive bridge in the world.
Point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
I claim to be misrepresented.
No, there we are.
Chair, before I get to the report, I'm very pleased to, to update the chamber. Last week, we submitted the business case for the Gold City Glider to Transling, which is something we've been working on for some time. I want to thank our Transport for Brisbane network planning team who've been working on completing this business case. I know that the proposed route has benefited from their expert knowledge of our bus network and knowing how Brisbane residents like to use public transport in our city. The proposed route for the Gold City Glider runs from Hamilton to Wollongaba via Fortitude Valley, Spring Hill and the CBD, utilising the upgraded Kingsford Smith Drive. The upgraded Kingsford Smith Drive was a critical precursor for proposing this service as it provides indented busways, a bus bay, as I should say, along the corridor to cater for future increases in bus. The upgraded Kingsford Smith Drive was a critical precursor for proposing this service as it provides indented busways, a bus bay, as I should say, along the corridor to cater for future increases in bus services, which reduces delays and increases the reliability of travel times, which is, as we all know, something very important when you're delivering a glider service. This service would link both the Portside Precinct and the RNA Precinct into the CBD via bus, travelling via a popular CBD location such as Riverside and Queens Wharf before continuing into Wollongaba. The proposed alignment will also allow the Gold City Glider to be a valuable transfer point between rail and bus. And it'll also act as a distributor service for the new Albert Street Cross River Rail Station as well as the Bowen Hills and Wollongaba stations. Of course, in the past 12 months, North Shore Hamilton has been confirmed as the main athletes' village for the Olympic and Paralympic Games and Gaba as the main stadium, as you know, Chair. So it isn't any coincidence that the current proposal is for this service to be called the Gold City Glider because we will be going for gold at the 2032 Olympic Games. With the Olympics on the horizon, a high frequency bus service connecting Hamilton to Wollongaba through the CBD will be absolutely critical for transporting thousands of visitors to Brisbane. Chair, now that council has completed the business case, it will be up to Translink to ultimately approve and implement the new service. A key aspect of the proposal will be the negotiation with Translink to commit to a shared funding arrangement for the service, much like the model in place with the Blue City Glider. We have proposed the new service to be equally funded by council and Translink as per the existing Blue City Glider arrangements. This will need to be negotiated with Translink, but we really do hope the state government will get on board to this, on board with this proposal and agree to co-fund it with council. With Brisbane to host the Games in 2032, it's so important that we put planning in place now to ensure that our public transport network has the improved capacity and new travel options to offer visitors to our wonderful Olympic city. Chair, last week in the Transport Committee, our presentation provided an update on the Brisbane Metro Pilot Vehicle, which included the design process and the testing that we have done to date. I'd like to highlight one aspect of the vehicle design and testing in particular, and that is the accessibility standards and engagement process. Brisbane Metro is committed to delivering an accessible transport system to ensure that we achieve council's goal to be a city where everyone can move around safely and easily, regardless of their age or ability. Right throughout the project, we have regularly engaged with council's dedicated access and inclusion team and the Department of Transport and Main Roads. But we also formally engaged an accessibility advisor for the vehicle design and we undertook genuine early consultation with the disability sector in procurement and prior to completion of the design. We established the Brisbane Metro Accessibility Working Group, which contains members with interests in mobility, disability services, access, aged, hearing and vision impairment to work with council's metro team on accessibility matters. And the working group provides a tremendous interactive forum for members to provide input into the design and operation of the vehicle, project infrastructure, onboard systems and customer journey and experience. We've had groups such as Age and Disability Advocates Australia, Choice Passion Life, Better Hearing Australia, Vision Australia, Queensland is with a disability, as well as departmental and Translink representatives on this group. And they held over 25 meetings and engagement sessions through the design process, leading us to make a huge amount of improvements in things like door layouts, mobility compartments, priority seating and passenger assistance buttons, to name a few. It truly has been a, a champion effort in the co-design space for the Brisbane Metro team. And Mr. Chair, last week was very exciting, as it marked the first time that some of our accessibility group actually got to see the vehicle in person. I'd like to share one comment in particular with the chamber from a wheelchair user who said, quote, "I felt very comfortable on the Pilot Metro and I haven't felt comfortable using public transport in 30 years." That's what it's all about, Chair, that, a comment like that is what makes all of the difficult days in this job worth it, to hear just how much Brisbane Metro has changed the life of someone who uses public transport in our city. This is part of our ongoing engagement with accessibility advocates and it's certainly not the end of the road, but it was great to hear that feedback on the vehicle. The design effort from everyone on the Brisbane Metro vehicle has been outstanding and I commend them all. Through the presentation, Chair, the committee was also showing some images of the Pilot Metro charging at our flash charger at Countess Street, and councillor Cassidy had some questions about that, which I took on notice. Let me start by saying no bus operator facilities have been lost at Countess Street, the driver meals space remains open. However, the addition of the charging facility has resulted in the loss of some parking bays at Countess Street, meaning we've had to change a layover plan for some routes. As a result, scheduled meals are no longer allocated to Countess Street, so while meal facility remains open for relief breaks, scheduled meals are instead assigned to other facilities in the network. We are currently looking at opportunities to add additional facilities in the areas around Countess Street and Roman Street Parklands to provide some more meal spaces for drivers as well, as well as toilet facilities. But I want to reiterate, Chair, no facilities or scheduled meals have been lost, they are instead reallocated to locations along the driver's route. Finally, Mr. Chair, councillors will have received a briefing note today about the Bayside e-scooter trials as well as the Safe Night Precinct lockout. I'm happy to advise that both trials will be continued for another six months. In the Sangate Shauncliff Zone, we've seen over 30,000 trips taken since the trial began and another 33,000 in Winter Manly. Very clear that e-mobility continues to be a popular transport option and a hit with locals and visitors on the Bayside. And I'd like to thank both councillor Cumming and councillor Cassidy for the feedback that they provided to council officers on the success or otherwise of the trial. We'll be partnering with Griffith University to better understand community sentiment and opportunities for e-mobility services in areas like this. Finally, in the remaining 30 seconds that I've got, Chair, I just wanted to commend the state government, in particular the Transport Minister Mark Bailey, on the recently announced e-scooter law changes. This council and in particular this Lord Mayor were the first to embrace e-mobility in the country, but we are not solely responsible for its regulation. We've been calling on the state government to step up to the plate and recently they have been doing just that. And I think it's important to acknowledge in a bipartisan way when that happens. Thanks very much, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Further speakers? First of all, councillor Cassidy, your point of misrepresentation.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I think it's clear that councillor Murphy doesn't listen very well. I didn't say the Kangaroo Point Bridge was the most expensive in the world, I said the bikeway extension over Breakfast Creek was the most expensive bikeway bridge per linear metre at $260,000 a metre. I'll also speak on this item.
Thank you, yes. Yep, starts now.
Thanks very much, Chair. Just briefly on the, on the metro vehicle design and the presentation we had last week, I can understand why Lord Mayor and why councillor Murphy are very touchy about this subject and about the, about the metro and about their overseas made buses and trying to claim as if there's still some manufacturing facility producing buses for Brisbane City Council out at Volgrin. What we know after last week's presentation is very clear that this LMP administration has abandoned bus building here in Brisbane. And what they are getting the workers out of Volgrin to do is put stickers on the metro vehicles. That's about it. When, when the offices, the project officers were questioned about the extent of local manufacturing as a component of the metro vehicles, it was very clear that those vehicles coming from Switzerland were coming entirely complete. Even questions around the anchor points for people in mobility devices, it was unclear whether even those anchor points could be fitted here in Brisbane or whether those anchor points would be fitted overseas as well. So those highly skilled workers, that we had a 30-year partnership with at Volgrin, who were producing locally made buses for the people of Brisbane, have been relegated to putting decals and stickers on buses so this LMP administration can run around and say, oh no, we still have, we still have local components being added to the metro, to the metro buses, said presumably to the Chinese made electric buses when we start seeing more of them roll in and being imported rather than being made here as well. So what, I thought the presentation was actually very useful in shining a light on how hollow this metro project is when it comes to supporting local jobs.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy? Oh, sorry, any further speakers? Councillor Murphy, summing up?
Sure, thanks very much, Chair, and I thank councillor Cassidy for his contribution to the debate. However, what I think you've just heard is very unfortunately councillor Cassidy verbal the officer that was presenting at the committee presentation last week because the officer did talk about a range of other activities that were undertaken at Volgrin's facility at Eagle Farm. But what councillor Cassidy likes to do is he likes to minimize their contribution to metro, he likes to talk it down, he likes to have a go at those workers and say that the work that they do is meaningless. Literally what he has said today in the chamber is that the work that they do is placing stickers on the vehicle, when actually we know that their work there includes livery installation as one of its components, but it's also fitment of emergency exit and response decals, CCT installation and assessment, reversing camera and buzzer installation, apparently that's not important, that's just like putting a sticker on, vehicle registration and registration plate installation, fitment of fire blankets and extinguishers, extinguishers just as important as putting a sticker on apparently, Chair, wheel alignment, transponder installation, telematics commission, commissioning and assessment so that the vehicle can talk to our IT network that we're building at the back end, radio installation, cleaning activities, and of course, charging, charging, the installation of the charging equipment as well. So apparently all of that is unimportant if you ask councillor Cassidy because all he heard was stickers and all he spoke about, and the only question that he was asking in the committee was about spats, the little, the little shrouds that cover the wheels, that's all he was interested in, in the committee, Chair. So our specification for the remaining 59 vehicles with HES refers to a local presence. And we will continue to engage with HES regarding Volgrin's participation and their opportunity for local participation. And I have every confidence, Chair, that that local participation will grow over the life of the project. Council is committed to continuing to work with local industry to increase capability regarding servicing and maintenance of industry-leading metros and state-of-the-art flash charging infrastructure, both of which are the first of their kind in Australia and the southern hemisphere. And councillor Cassidy's disgraceful attempt to minimize Volgrin's involvement in this game-changing infrastructure is just sad. And I know why he's sad, councillors on this side know why he's sad, because we know what he really wants deep down is he would have really loved for there to be job losses at Volgrin. He would have really loved for those workers to be out of a job so he could blame council for it. But unfortunately, Volgrin is very busy, there's a lot of work going on down, down there, and all of their employees were extremely excited to be working on the game-changing Brisbane Metro. He is the only one who's yet to get on board with now, the state and the feds on board. We don't expect that will change, Chair, but it's important that Brisbane residents and everyone who's watching know the real truth about Brisbane Metro and what's happening down at Volgrin.
Thank you. We now move to the vote on the Transport Committee report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, the Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 7th of June 2022 be adopted.
Seconded. Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Matic that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 7 June 2022 be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to speak to the committee report from last week, which was a presentation by the Asset Management Manager on the topic of automated road condition surveys, which is a laser imaging and ranging detection service to determine the quality and longevity of our road surfaces. Following the flood and storm event of late February, it became clear that some of our roads had been compromised due to an increase in water, both water flow and by being inundated by water at that time. So as councillors should know, one of the items that largely reduces the life of a road and its road surface is water. And so with this event came a potential for a loss of, of duration, durability of a particular road surface. So on the 19th of April this year, council engaged a company called Pavement Management Services to commence a flood, a flooded road condition survey project covering 285 lineal kilometres of flood-affected road. These road surveys are being conducted using laser-based systems and imaging and are divided into regions for efficient routing and scheduling. The total project time is anticipated to take between eight to 12 weeks with three to four weeks allocated to collect data, that is also weather permitting. The remaining project period will be used for post-processing, review, validation and analysis. Automated road condition surveys will automatically geotag, measure, detect and quantify all key functional parameters of a road in a single pass, including instances of cracking, rutting, texture, potholes, bleeding, shoving, grovelling and roughness. Wet weather can impact the collection of data as it affects the laser crack measurement system deflecting due to a wet road surface. PMS have completed the first collection of road data and this is anticipated to be processed and provided to council by the 10th of June this year. PMS will continue collecting data for the rest of the road network with a second and final set of road data provided to council by the end of June and July respectively. Modern approaches such as this to determine a sophisticated vehicle, mounted equipment and artificial intelligence to identify road defects and potential road failures into the future, there is also a second vehicle to help with this process. The laser van surveys at a road, travels roads at a normal traffic speed having sophisticated equipment such as the laser profilometer, which uses lasers to identify road performance criteria which are unseen or hard to detect. The laser detection is referred to as laser imaging detection and, laser imaging detection and ranging or LiDAR. The van's primary role is road condition survey but can also be used to capture other video imagery such as surveying the condition of street trees, roadside furniture, signs, lines, curb and channel. So the laser truck is used on major arterial roads and assesses pavement distress caused by heavy vehicles, picking up deflection under the road surface that is unable to be detected by the van. The information collected by these vehicles is, uses a GPS system to ensure that the exact location is recorded so that we can attend to them properly. So this, basically, what that means is that we have a system for assessing road surface from what can be seen and unseen subterranean faults so that we can make better assessments about which roads and when need to be resurfaced or repaired. This is a sophisticated system to make sure that we get the best value for money out of the work that we do to the road surfaces. Can I also thank the company, PMS? They were, or I should actually thank the ACT government who had contracted the PMS services to work for the territory during this period but allowed us to use them in response to the natural disaster that affected us. So can I just thank the ACT government, also the PMS services for conducting this work that will make sure that we get better value for money and inform an improved decision-making process around road maintenance.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Any further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on item A, the automated road condition survey. And I thank councillor Wines for reading out the report before us today, word for word, that was very useful. And just note a couple of things that would have been slightly more useful than simply reading what's written in the report. As it notes in paragraph six, and councillor Wines read out, the collection of data, first collection of data was to be provided to council by the 10th of June. He kind of made it sound prospective and obviously the report was last week, but he's had that data now for four days presumably. It would have been really good to get, say, a first assessment of that data. It's the 14th of June now, and one of the things that would have been useful as a responsible chair, given that I've been asking for several weeks now for a list of flooded roads in Tennyson Ward that are listed for resurfacing, is to understand what data was collected, how useful it would be, whether or not that it's comprehensive in terms of identifying the damage or whether there still needs to be visual inspections by people. Reading out what is written in the report isn't helping us progress this issue forward. It's critically important. And the reason it's important is we are three and a half months post the floods and this council still cannot say which roads are going to be resurfaced following flood damage. Now, I've sadly been through this before and I know that if council does not list them now and they don't get done as part of the flood mapping and flood package that we seek reimbursement from the federal government from, they don't get done. And that is a big problem. So for several weeks now, I've been asking the officers and I've asked questions on notice today, and we don't know apparently as a council, three and a half months on post the floods, where the flood damaged roads are. Apparently though, according to councillor Wines, there has been this new technology deployed to find this information, which apparently has got, but it can't update us on. I mean, did we even get it, as it says on the 10th of June? I mean, I would have thought that's a pretty basic thing, even if it was, yes, we've got this information, we're now assessing it, we're analyzing it, you know, that'd be great. But here's- we're analysing it, you know, that'd be great. But here's, here's the rub, here's the thing that is really quite tricky. Tomorrow is the council budget. Tomorrow, presumably, there's going to be a list of roads in the budget that say, listed for resurfacing. That's historically been the way it's been done for many, many years. But here's, here's the problem. According to council today, they don't know where the flood damaged roads are, and that's in the answers to the questions on notice. Council does not know where the flood damaged roads are. So I don't know how the budget has been formulated without key data about where the flood damaged roads are. That's the first fundamental problem. Two, if these electronic surveys have been done and they were handed to council four days ago, so that's last Thursday, then certainly the budget's completed, it's not going to be relevant and used for that. So here's the fundamental question for councillor Wines when he stands up and he sums up, what's, what, how is this information going to be used when you've already written your budget, you've already listed which roads are going to be resurfaced, and you cannot publicly account for the number of flood damaged roads in this city? Is there just some sort of slush fund that's going to fund them when you decide what they are? Because the budget has to be decided on the basis of where it is most needed, where there are facts identifying where the damaged roads are, and three and a half months on from the floods, that information is to hand. Council officers tell us that they have conducted these surveys. Brad Wilson writes every couple of weeks to me and says, we've done phase one, we've done phase two, we've done phase three. And that's supposed to be the gathering of data and information about flood damaged assets in the city. But when you ask a question, please provide a list of playgrounds that are going to be replaced because they're flood damaged. Oh, that information doesn't exist. Please provide a list of roads that are flood damaged. Well, councillor, that information doesn't exist. That's what we've been told today, the day before the budget. So I think probably it's a good thing we're looking at new technology to help us, but the problem is this LMP administration is not accountable for the way in which this city is responding to the flood crisis. It's not being transparent about how it is identifying these roads, how they're being, when they're being identified for repair and replacement, and it's not being open by communicating that information with the local councillors and the community to make sure that we are all on the same page about how flood recovery is happening. Because it is not happening. It is not happening. We're not seeing roads, we're not seeing playgrounds, we're not seeing footpaths, we're not seeing any of these flood damaged assets being fixed. There is zero accountability, zero transparency and zero openness coming from council. And my fear tomorrow with the way in which this budget is going to be handed down, and again, the Lord Mayor said there weren't many council officers here in two thousand and eleven that are still here, well, I definitely was here and I remember what happened. The last time council did its budget before the state government's budget, it ended up cutting a bunch of projects afterwards on the flimsiest of excuses that the state didn't give money to them. That was just all a sleight of hand behind the scenes with the LMP, putting in all these projects to make themselves look good like they do every budget, and then cutting them, cutting them at the first budget review. So I'm just putting everybody in Brisbane on notice that this council has been unresponsive to identifying where flooded public assets are, and that includes roads. Council officers say they've done the work, but when you ask for the list, it's not provided. You put questions on notice, the chairperson says that information is not available, despite the fact he stood up here today and told us it has been done and it was all handed to council, you know, on the tenth of June. Plus, the officers in writing are telling us it's been done. So here's the big issue. How is it that you're formulating a budget tomorrow when you can't tell us where the flooded roads are today?
Further debate? No further debate? Councillor Wines?
No.
No right reply? I'll now put the report. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday the seventh of June twenty-twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Hammond, that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday the seventh of June two thousand and twenty-two be adopted. Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. Before moving to the report, I did want to just touch upon a point that councillor Strunk made a little bit earlier. Councillor Strunk is an active member of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, regular questioner of our presenter and obviously has a keen interest in the city planning domain. And so I would have expected that he would appreciate that we work and undertake our planning under the auspices of the State Planning Act, and that we have a, a performance-based planning scheme, and that the city is changing and it's changing rapidly. We're all aware of the, the growing population, and the Lord Mayor made it very clear a little bit earlier on that we face a challenge with, with housing in this city. And so the reality is that that is a challenge, we, we have to respond to it where we can. And no suburb in this city is going to be immune from that changes and that challenge. And so, you know, we are going to continue to support a growing population, we are going to need to provide additional, additional housing, and so we are all part of trying to address that challenge. Councillor Sri also made some points regarding the infrastructure charges reduction for eligible organisations, and I would like to point out to him that these reductions do not capture commercial components of, of developments. It's really focused on the key activities that the organisation undertakes. And so this notion that, you know, they're, they're getting something for nothing is, is not accurate. It doesn't capture the commercial element. And I'd also note that where the state put a mid on a project, we get no infrastructure charges at all. So food for thought there. Now, moving on to the, the report itself, in last week's committee, we received a presentation on the new and updated heritage trails in Brisbane. Council currently has twenty heritage walking trails across the city, and we're looking to add more as circumstances permit, and we are looking to update these where possible and convert them to a, a digital format to allow residents to walk the trail with their mobile device and use QR codes to, at these locations, just to get a sense of the full history of the location. It is a great way for both residents and tourists to this city to explore our unique heritage and, and history. And the, the trails range from our very popular city centre trail out to our suburban trails which are scattered around the city. And we recently released the Salisbury War Industries Heritage Trail in councillor Griffiths Ward, and it tells a great story about Brisbane's wartime history. And there are eleven local heritage places within that heritage trail, and in particular, the former Rock Lee World War Two munition factory, which is the largest of its kind in Australia. Post-war, these factories have converted into other working uses, and now through the neighbourhood planning process, we'll be looking at ways to capture more historical sites and how these can be preserved and used for future generations to enjoy. And I have taken a drive around this particular location in recent times, and there are some great examples back from that wartime period. There appears to be a pretty popular cafe in one of the old brick buildings, and so it is a different type of trail. It's, it does harken back to a bygone era. There are other trails across the city, a few of them include Albion, Ascot, Hamilton, Banyo and Nudgee, Bolimba, Cooperoo, South Brisbane and the Gabba. And there's also an Aboriginal cultural trail and an environmental trail as well. These are all available on the council website. As I mentioned, some of them have been digitised, and I'd encourage all councillors in this chamber to make themselves familiar with these trails, and where possible, to promote them to their local residents. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Any further debate? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, I rise to speak on the heritage trails presentation to Brisbane, to the committee last week. I think it's fantastic that there are these heritage trails in, in twenty suburbs around Brisbane, and I suspect every single one of them has been done in recent years, you know, over a period of time, not just, you know, last couple of years. But I suspect that there's one that's not been done, that was probably promised well before all of the twenty that councillor Allen is talking about here today. And that is the long-promised heritage walking trail for the Sherwood-Graceville area. And councillor Allen, you might want to have a look up, because I wouldn't want anyone to call me a liar, or say that I don't speak the truth, or that I'm making things up, which is what the LMP normally does over here. So councillor Allen, I appreciate it if you would look at the document that I am holding. It is the Sherwood-Graceville Neighbourhood Plan, and back when these plans were done, there was such a thing as an enhancement strategy. And one of the promised issues for our district back then was to develop a heritage walking trail linking significant heritage places in the district. And it was given a medium-term timeframe. Now, this document and the draft neighbourhood plan actually came out in two thousand and eight. The plan wasn't formalised until two thousand and eleven, twelve, it's a few, it's a decade ago since the plan was actually finalised. There's been zero progress, zero progress on a promise by this council to the Chelma, Graceville, Sherwood and Corinda community. The reason it was put in here is because heritage and character issues are significant to my community. We have campaigned very long and hard, and I have in this place, predating councillor Allen, and I'm sure he knows though, but I've moved motion after motion to try and protect all pre-forty-six homes in this place. But this is a promise that the council made to the people of the suburb that I represent. And because it was listed as a medium-term project, you know, I let a little time go past, there were bigger issues to fry out of the debacle that was the Sherwood-Graceville Neighbourhood Plan. But when the Bank Road skip, Avenue skip was done a few years ago now, I saw that as a great opportunity to incorporate the walking trails as part of the revitalisation of our area. So I put it forward in my submission to councillors to incorporating some heritage walking trail, and that was also ignored. So I guess my question through you, Mr. Deputy Chair, to councillor Allen, is he going to be the fourth LMP planning chairperson that ignores a promise made by this council to our community? Because councillor Cooper, as the planning chairperson, ignored this. Councillor Simmons, as the planning chairperson, ignored this. Councillor Adams, as the planning chairperson, ignored this. Will you too ignore the promise that was made to our community to develop a heritage walking trail as part of the Chelma, Sherwood, Graceville community? Because I don't think it is good enough that you have not done it, and this council has not done it. My request has been ignored. What I would say is, we have one of the most significant Queensland architects of national renown in Tennyson Ward, and the Walter Taylor buildings and infrastructure in my community are very significant. It lends itself to a very easy-to-understand heritage walking trail, starting from the Walter Taylor Bridge, right up to the shops he built, the houses he built, and the church that stands on Oxley Road. It would be an excellent heritage walking trail. There are obviously lots of other heritage-related, you know, issues that you could do walking trails on, but immediately, Taylor Bridge, Walter Taylor lends itself to a heritage walking trail. So I guess, I guess what I see when these reports come up week after week after week is that suburbs like, sorry, I'm going to need my glasses, I can't see anything. Suburbs like Salisbury now, Steve, you've got one, great. Salisbury's got one, fantastic. When, when was that discussed, if I could, I'm just speculating as to when that came up. Through the Chair, I'm just, I'm just wondering, is it a year ago, two years ago, you know? It's a while ago. All right, that's good. But we do have others. We've got a CBD one, we've got one at Banyo. There's lots of them around the place, and the one for Salisbury was actually brought up as part of the engagement events for the neighbourhood plan. So it's so nice to see them, council getting on and doing the Salisbury one. But I guess I would be asking, why is it that the Sherwood-Graceville Neighbourhood Plan heritage walking trail was never delivered? It's a reasonable question, I'd be thinking. And just so councillor Allen can go back and check for himself, it's on page fifty-three. And, you know, if I went through this and we looked actually at some of the, some of the things in here, you know, that were promised to our community, I can tell you now, most of them haven't been done. It's very, it's very sad that this council doesn't really deliver on the things it promises out my way. I mean, there's so much that needs doing. But I'd just say to councillor Allen that when you sum up today, perhaps you will be the fourth planning chairperson in my time, and perhaps you'll be the one that stands up and says, well, councillor Johnston, that's an oversight, that's an oversight, and I'm sorry that's happened in your community, and I would like to work with you to make sure that we deliver this. Because I've been asking, and I would like to think that this council is going to be as good as its word, and I say this to the planning officers listening up there in Brisbane Square as well. It's great that you're doing these heritage trails elsewhere in the city, but there is a community where it was promised and never delivered, and it's time to deliver it.
Further debate? Councillor Griffiths?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I'll just say a few words on the heritage trails, and I, I think they're a good idea, and they're certainly, they have been popular, I'm aware with residents that I deal with, that they're very popular in our community. And so I, I really will do a plug for the one in Salisbury. This has been a, a popular area in terms of running trails and running history tours, and it's been done by a lady called Beryl Roberts, who's a local historian, involved with the Coopers Plains History Group. But actually, under the previous councillor for Maruka Ward, councillor Mark Bailey, Park was named after her, Beryl Roberts Park at Coopers Plains. So she's a very strong lady and very strong activist in our community. And I suppose for me, the work that council's done is really great in highlighting this particular area. It's tucked away, it's tucked away behind Tuie, Tuie Forest, and has Nathan and Salisbury and Maruka sort of at the intersection of those suburbs. It grew out of World War Two. So this whole area was the munitions site during World War Two for this, the, for making, yes, for the Pacific, for making munitions, and hence was a very important site for our city. It was also a site where the Story Bridge was, 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 how would you say it, founded, founded, anyway, poured, whatever they do with the steel to make the Story Bridge, and also was, has been a huge area for the workforce of Brisbane in terms of heavy industry for our city as our city grew. Around the area, and it is changing, particularly with the, what I've seen is particularly with the changes in the inner city and the loss of industrial land there, many, many businesses and many, many locals have actually moved out my way to, to more affordable areas. And so the Salisbury industrial area has actually, Salisbury-Maruka industrial area has been changing quite rapidly. We have the cafe there called Reload Cafe, and when the owner of that cafe came and saw me and said he wanted to do a cafe in that industrial area, I had a few doubts about it, but he's made a real success of it, and it's something that really draws people into that community. As well as that, it's interesting, along with his cafe, he set up nighttime entertainment as well. So it's actually interesting to see an industrial area being used on weekend nights for music and for, as a venue for entertainment. And I think that's a great use because it gets the noise away from residents, and it actually activates that space, which is really safe, safe to use. Similarly, we sponsor- Similarly, we sponsor the Chrome Street Festival down there, which is an interesting bit of edgy festival in the industrial area. There's Food Connect down there, which is a very, very innovative little organisation that is by Rob, Rob Perrin, his wife, that are bringing in a number of businesses under one umbrella and acting as an incubator for businesses that then can grow. And it's really around a sustainable approach, and certainly something I think council needs to be working with them more closely on. And the other organisation many of you will know is Oz Harvest, that's based around there too. And they run their operation from there. So look, I think it's, it's really good. This is a good initiative by council, adds a lot to the area. There are a number of breweries also moving to the area, which also means more people attracted to the area. My big take on this, and talking to our planners, is this area needs to be kept for employment. It's seven kilometres from the city, it's a developer's paradise if they could get their hands on it. But we also need to keep some areas of our city for employment, because we need, not only for people to live, but we need to have work in the city as well. Last thing I'll add is the new park that this council supported, the Crash Nov on the corner of Evans and Bodasit Road. We'll pick up on this project and incorporate it into the naming of that project with the local history group and make sure there's some links there as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Allen? I'll now put the report, will those in favour say aye?
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, Councillor Murphy.
I just heard councillor Johnson scream across the chamber that councillor Allen was gutless, completely gutless. I just asked for your ruling on that, whether you heard it. I consider that an active disorder.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy. As I was speaking, I heard something, but I wasn't specific about it. But councillor Johnston, if you could please, just refrain from that kind of language in the chamber. There are other ways to better express yourself.
Well, if I'm being called disgusting, I'm sorry, and that's not inappropriate behaviour, then I'm sorry. I just, I don't know what is.
Councillor Davis.
Point of order.
Oh, sorry, Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you. I would just say that's not a correct, I didn't hear councillor Johnson scream across the chamber. She made a comment, but she didn't scream.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday, 7th June 2022 be adopted.
Seconded. Moved by councillor Davis, seconded by councillor Mackay, that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 7th of June 2022 be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Item A was the committee presentation on the completed park projects delivered this financial year. The Shrima Council is committed to delivering improvements that enhance Brisbane's public open space network and to provide a diversity of formal and informal recreation spaces for the community. Included in the presentation was an overview of the Hanlon Park project that is nearing completion. Hanlon Park is being revitalised as a priority precinct of the Norman Creek Master Plan. The park has been transformed into an attractive and versatile public space to support the growing Stones Corner precinct. Central to the project was the removal of the concrete channel, preparation of a diversion channel, and excavation works to create the new meandering waterway. The new amenities facility at Heathwood Park was also highlighted, and I'd like to thank councillor Owen for her contribution to the project, which includes the construction of a new amenities facility that incorporates public toilets and change rooms, as well as supporting minor park embellishments, including a water bubbler and bins. Deputy Chair, the presentation also included parks that provided new or upgraded park infrastructure, such as Davies Park at West End, Oakman Park Taringa, Springfield Street Park McGregor, and Vera Canali Park at Lutwich, as well as projects that enhance our metropolitan and district playgrounds, such as Fisher Family Park in Rochdale, Gus Davies Park Bald Hills, Corralgory Park in Morningside, Nudgee Waterhole Reserve in Nudgee, Thrust Street Park Anala, and Windsor Sports and Community Park at Windsor. The presentation also showcased completed scooter tracks and then intercoursees that are nearing completion also. Item B was a park naming submission requesting Satellite Street Park at 45 Procyon Street Cooperoo to be formally named Barbara Bryce Park. The submission was supported by the committee. It follows a petition containing 117 signatures that the committee considered earlier this year. Mrs Barbara Bryce and her husband Ivor bought their house in Satellite Street back in 1942. At the time, it was one of only two houses in the area and was surrounded by bushland. Barbara lived in Satellite Street for 77 years, up until her 100th birthday in 2019. Barbara was an active member of the Country Women's Association of Australia, a prize-winning crocheter, crocheter, and knitter, keen traveller, fisherwoman and camper. She was well-liked and respected in the local community and loved living in Cooperoo. Her family still lives within the local area. Sadly, Barbara passed away in January 2020. Item C was a petition containing 57 signatures requesting council install a BMX pump track on the corner of Wogaroo Street and Waterford Road, Forest Lake. The submission was supported by the committee. It was noted that the corner of the park is designated as a future recreation park site. However, as this site has extensive tree cover, it's been assessed as not being suitable for district-level infrastructure, such as skateboarding or BMX facilities, as well as public toilets and car parking. But located just north of the corner of Wogaroo Street and Waterford Road is the future Ellen Grove Sports Park Site, which is in the early stages of feasibility and assessment for the development of future park infrastructure. Demand for skateboarding BMX facilities and other amenities are also being considered as part of this assessment. Once early investigations and high-level planning have been finalised, the local community will be consulted on their preferences to inform development of a design for the future park. The local councillor was consulted and supports the recommendation. Item D was a petition containing seven signatures requesting council rename Gap Creek Circuit, located at Gap Creek Reserve, to Gillian's, Gillian's, Gillian's Circuit. Mrs Gillian Duncan has been an advocate and supporter of mountain biking in Mount Cootha and South East Queensland for more than 20 years, and naming this section of the reserve would acknowledge that contribution. The committee supported the recommendation for council to consider the naming in accordance with council's naming parks, facilities and tracks procedure. And I will leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you, Deputy Chair.
Any debate? Councillor Adaman? Oh, councillor May want to turn your microphone on.
Yeah, that would help. Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak briefly in support of item D, requesting council rename Gap Creek Circuit at Gap Creek Reserve in my ward to Gillian's Circuit. As councillor Davis indicated, this is a respectful and heartfelt opportunity to honour Gillian Duncan. A name change as proposed would pay tribute to Gillian's legacy, particularly at Gap Creek, where she successfully lobbied for sanctioned mountain bike trials, then a first in Queensland. Gillian has worked tirelessly, both physically and mentally, over 20 years as a volunteer to initiate the trail care programme with council, and has contributed hundreds of hours to maintain and improve the trail network. She once commissioned a scientific study on this trail to highlight the benefits of good trail design, to reduce the effects of usage and weathering on soil erosion displacement. She is known as the godmother of mountain biking through her work as the Mountain Biking Australia President for many years, coordinating events and advocating for mountain biking opportunities across the state and in neighbouring local authorities. Deputy Chair, I noted in my office records Gillian's ongoing advocacy to convince the powers that be that mountain biking could coexist with other recreational activities in areas such as Mount Cootha. Having helped establish the trail network, Gillian led by example in their maintenance and upkeep and ensuring they met exacting international standards for trails. I first met Gillian appropriately one very hot summer morning last year when I walked Whitbird Way on Mount Cootha, on a day when Bora volunteers were undertaking maintenance of the track following heavy, recent heavy rain. There was Gillian, tools in hand, giving advice to other volunteers and to me about how it should be done. With her legendary fighting spirit, Gillian continues to inspire the mountain biking community by showing up at trail care sessions and sharing her advice on trail design and advocacy. Through her efforts, council now has a significant mountain bike trail network that is an asset and will be enjoyed by the community into the future. And it is my pleasure to support this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any further debate? Councillor Griffiths?
Yes, look, this was a very interesting presentation. I think there were 13 parks presented from all over the city in relation to it. And it's good to see what council can do when it puts its mind to it. I was, during the presentation, and for each site that came up, there, and these are predominantly, I'll check this out, these are predominantly capital projects that have been funded through the capital budget. There was discussion at each, for each site about the consultation undertaken. The consultation undertaken with the local community, the consultation undertaken with the councillor, consultation undertaken might be with the Aboriginal community, it might be a consultation with the disability community. But there was consultation all through this presentation, which is the issue I raised with councillor Davies. And I have raised before in committee, and interestingly, a number of LMP councillors, I won't name them, have raised it as well. And I've suggested they might want to speak up as well, is that with our, with the local capital projects in my ward, there is no consultation. It is councillor, you're getting what you're getting. The community's getting that. We'll make a decision about it, and that's what you're getting. So I'm a bit miffed as to how council can say, we consult, and we're really interested in consulting. And I've, I heard it before with, I know councillor Adams did consultation around a skate facility that's going in a local park that used to be in my area, Shaftesbury Street Park. So there is a mechanism for council and council officers to consult. And I know during my whole time in council, I have always consulted on capital projects, until this year. Until this year, when it was, no councillor, there'll be no more consultation, you get what you get. Which I think is bad for the community. I think the community has a right to have a say, and often they have very constructive feedback to give. And it's a way of us doing our job. It's actually a way of us doing our job, ensuring the council is delivering for what the community wants. So I think it's a really reticent move that the administration has made, that they are prepared to consult on these projects, or projects that seem to be in LMP areas, they're happy to consult and have the bureaucracy consult. But in areas or undertakings they're doing in some wards, they say there should be no consultation. And I'll remain opposed to that. And I hope, when we get back into power, that we'll actually bring back consultation for residents, involving residents in their local parks. Actually getting council officers out there, talking to people, and ensuring that what we're delivering isn't just in some parks, but it's in all our parks, and it's for all residents of Brisbane, not just some residents of Brisbane. So I remain concerned about our consultation process. I'd be really interested to hear a couple of councillors from that side of the chamber, who've certainly told me, hey, it's a problem for us too. Well, speak up. Speak up in your party room, I don't mind, but tell people that this is not how it should be done. It should be done so that residents have a say. Residents are paying, paying for this. Residents are paying for this. It isn't LMP money, it isn't Labor money, it isn't Greens money, it's residents' money. And so if residents are paying for it, residents should have a say in what we're delivering for them. Okay, thank you.
Any further debate? Councillor Strunk?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chair. I rise in respects to item A, and that is the completed parks projects. Now, I note here that Thrust Street is supposed to have been completed by mid-June this year now. Now, I'd hate to disagree with this statement because it's not true. It's not true, it's not, listen, the fences are still all around the play equipment that's being constructed. I don't think there's even any soft fall in there yet. I know there's a shortage, I'm sure the deputy chair was having the same problems with some of his parks. But there's a number of other aspects of this, of this restoration of Thrust Street Park that I'm pretty, I'm fairly sure has not been completed. So I asked the Chair, right, to contact their, you know, your people just to see what the heck is going on in Thrust Street Park, because I don't believe that it's anywhere near completion actually at this stage. Certainly, the items, the infrastructure items that were going to take the most time are in place, but I don't think they're, well, they're certainly not up to the public by any stretch of the imagination. Fencing, I was there just last week, having a look, just to see how things are going. And I usually check about every fortnight, because it's just down the road from the office. And I'm fairly sure that a lot of the items here, which is one that I'd actually forgotten was we were going to get, was a Mystic Forest with interactive water sprayers. I don't think that's up and running, or if it is, it's nowhere near where I thought it was going to be. And there were some other items there as well. We are really looking forward to this. Thrust Street Park is a, is really in the centre of the Anlares suburb. It's in walking distance to a lot of houses. And I know that the local community is really looking forward to the opening of that, reopening of that park in some respects. It's been a, it's been a bit of an icon, it's right next to our PCYC. And they're really looking forward to being able to use some of that infrastructure for their own programmes. And I know that there's other community groups or organisations, Kindies and other places, that are actually looking forward, because there are going to, there is going to be some equipment there that they, that we haven't had in the ward before. And one of them is a, we've had, we have one of these, but it's over in the Forest Lake suburb, and that's a Flying Fox, which really, the kids are really looking forward to that. And it's just not small kids, it's big kids as well. So I just asked the Chair if she can follow up on that and give us a briefing of what's actually been completed and what needs to be completed, because I don't believe that all of the items listed here are ready for, ready for public use. And, yes, I was consulted on, thank you for the introduction, I'll tell you, I was consulted on this, but it has been a two-year programme, or two-year project. And so there was a lot of community consultation, which is, which is the way things should operate. And I think every councillor, no matter whether it's a Lord Mayor deliverable, or Capital Works, or whether it's one of our own, one out of our own funding, SIF funding, we should always be consulting the community and, of course, the local representative. In this case, I was, and I do, did appreciate that. But I would love to hear as to what, what items haven't been completed, what have been completed, what have been completed, and maybe what the new date is for completion. Thank you, Chair.
Further debate? No, oh, councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on item A, the presentation for completed park projects. I too, like councillor Griffiths, have noticed a very big change in the way that council is now delivering on its parks projects. And it is a reflection of the fact that this council is now a big corporation, and it does not care about the citizens that it represents any longer. This used to be a community-based service organisation, but unfortunately, that concept has long since left under the leadership of this LMP council for the past 18 years, and particularly over the last 10-plus years, under the leadership of the current CEO and the past couple of Lord Mayors, including the deputy mayor, who is now the Lord Mayor, who was the deputy mayor for nine years. And it is really unfortunate, I think, that we've been told we're not allowed to consult on playgrounds and parks anymore. And there's been a major project, a major problem in my ward at Hypes Park Sherwood. And again, councillor Marks was going to get back to me, but hasn't, and I've raised it repeatedly with the council officers. As I always do, we send through some suggestions based on some feedback from groups about what we want, and we ask for options, we ask for playground design options to come forward so that we can consult. So I did that last year, followed up repeatedly. And it's only a couple of months ago I was told, oh councillor, your playground's been through procurement, it's signed off, it's finished, and this is what you're getting? Gets better. You can pick the colours of the metal on the play equipment if you would like, councillor. So after 14 years of building playgrounds in a very cooperative way with council officers and with our community, and with our community, under this new structure created, very special structure created by the Lord Mayor, that, you know, I very clearly opposed last year. We've got to the point where this LMP administration does not want people, councillors, to consult with people about playground upgrades. Now, I've always taken the view, always taken the view that I am simply a facilitator when it comes to playgrounds. I always talk to the community about what they want, you know, what the mix of families is, what the, the mix of skills and interests is, whether it should have themes, whether it should be climbing theme. What do you call it? Oh, nature play or, you know, any, any different concepts. I'm always happy to discuss that with residents. This is the first time in 14 years, I've been told, no councillor, you get no say in this whatsoever. And it was quite shocking because I'm actually paying for that playground out of the Tennyson Ward suburban enhancement funds, which is supposed to be that program we were talking about earlier today, that councillors are actually responsible for delivering. So we don't get to do that anymore either. So I agree with councillor Griffiths that there is an absolute problem with the lack of consultation. And that again reflects the fundamental problem with this LMP administration, who've been here too long, that it's our way or the highway. That is the way they treat almost every issue in the community nowadays. This is what you're going to get, community, not what do you need? What would you like? Here's what we can do, here are some options. Well, we can tweak it and do this. Yeah, that's a great idea, we'll incorporate that. Yep, that sounds like something we can do. And you build something that has a lasting, well-respected legacy in the community. That's dead under this LMP administration. They have killed off consultation on playgrounds. And it's really interesting, I think councillor Griffiths, I'm going to go one more step than you while you were talking. I thought, well, why is it that in the committee, there was all this talk about consultation? How is it that there can be consultation happening in all these reports? And perhaps councillor Davis will hop up and explain why some projects get consultation and others don't? Because the only reason I can see is, of the 15 parks projects mentioned in this report before us today, 13 of them are in LMP wards. Could it be, could it be that the LMP is actually conducting consultation in their own wards, but is now telling me and the Labor councillors that they can't conduct consultation in their wards? Because based on the committee presentation, based on councillor Griffiths' participation in the meeting, it seems to be that there is one rule for the LMP and one rule for everybody else. Now, there is one green, one in councillor Shree's ward and one in councillor Strunk's ward. And I note, he did say he was consulted, so that's good. Oh, and, oh, sorry. Is that you, you Morningside, are you? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'll take that back. There are 12 LMP projects, two ALP projects and one green one. So I guess the question we've got now is, why is it that there is this huge difference between what is happening in LMP park projects and what is happening in Labor park projects in Maruka Ward and Tennyson Ward? I think they're valid questions. Because when there's one rule for the LMP and one rule for everybody else, that lacks fairness, that lacks accountability and that lacks transparency. I also note that this is the reflection of a year of parks projects. And there's two things that I'd note out of all of that, as well as the pork barreling going on in the LMP areas. One, these projects aren't actually completed. And there's, there's one in my ward which has only just started, literally just started. But two, they're, how do I put it? They're projects that are letting people down by not responding to the needs of our community. And I, I think that's the fairest way to put it. And when the community is ignored, you don't get good outcomes. And the best example of that is over in Inogra Ward, where the big sports project that so upset residents over there. And the LMP were going to spend $30 million on that project just about. And they've probably spent millions, wasted millions on doing that preliminary work down there. And they're not going to deliver a project. So they did do consultation down there, but they didn't listen. Yet they won't do consultation in my ward and that's going to lead to bad outcomes. So I just say, I ask for the policy. Apparently there's some policy that says we can't be consulted. I was sent a guideline that says we are supposed to be consulted about the scope of our playground upgrades. And I've written back again to councillor Marks and the people in PPI or whatever they're called nowadays. And there's been no response to the fact that I was not consulted about the playground, even though it says we're supposed to be. So I would just say that there is a real problem with how this is being managed. The problem fundamentally and without question is the centralization of power at Brisbane Square in News Branch and the lack of autonomy in the regional and local delivery of our park and playground projects. Without question, the centralization of control is to the detriment of our local community. And that's what's gone on. That's also what's impacting on flood recovery as well, because it's not local offices doing it. It's all being done by news in town. And we're not seeing the on-the-ground outcomes that are responsive to the local community, that reflect local community priorities. And that is because of the centralization of power and control in News Branch, in Brisbane Square, under the direction of the chairperson and the senior management, without consultation at the local level, with local councillors, local communities and local stakeholders. And whilst ever the LMP continue to do this top-down, you get what you're told approach, that is going to be bad for the local community. They'll eventually work out that it'll be bad for them too. But I suspect there'll be a lot less of them sitting on this side of the chamber who realize it far too late.
Further debate? Councillor Davies? Oh, I'm sorry councillor, please.
Sorry, Mr Chair, I wasn't, thank you. I wasn't going to say anything, but I, I might just say something very, very briefly about Corralbury Park. And it might clear up some of the discussions around consultation. Corralbury Park in Morningside was actually a project that was in the budget as a capital listing. I think it was two financial years ago now. And the difference with that project was consultation. Because initially that was for a playground upgrade through the budget. And through the consultation process, we actually found out from local residents and particularly from the local schools in the area, that what was really needed in that park was a toilet. And the playground equipment itself actually wasn't all that old. So through discussions with the Chair at the time, I think it was councillor Cunningham, agreement was reached that accessible toilets would be supported. And we were then able to do some further consultation on minor improvements to the playground. We actually, sorry, minor improvements to the park, which included fitness equipment. And we actually had onsite consultation on a weekend with council officers present. We had consultation with the local community kindergarten down the road. We had local consultation with some of the school community. And that was actually a really important part of that process. Because ultimately, we found out that the other thing that was missing from that park was actually connection with the footpath, which enabled us to actually create a scooter track around the park. But through all of that lovely consultation, what we also found is that we didn't have sufficient money for that project. So I was then able to, again, communicate with the council officers and the Chair at the time about contributing some money from the Morningside SIF for that project. And that ended up being significantly more than we anticipated, particularly with the toilets and the improvements that needed to be made to the plumbing in that park. But we got there in the end and it's been delivered. And I was actually there on the weekend with my family. And, you know, that park now is so well utilized. People are able to stay for extended periods of time. It's accessible. The accessibility improvements, particularly to the parking with the disability parking bay, has been wonderful. And it's now able to be used both as a dog park, as a playground, as a fitness hub. We have the soccer, soccer kick-around area as well. It's not a huge park, but it's extremely well utilized in a particularly high-growth area in Morningside. So I just wanted to, I guess, explain the positive role that consultation has in these park upgrades, particularly when they are capital listings. And tomorrow we'll see what comes out of the budget in terms of other projects across the city. And I, I think it's just a real shame if we don't see that consultation continue. Because as local councillors, you know, we are facing the people day to day. We know our local communities incredibly well. But also, the needs of communities change. And what may have been a priority for communities 12 months, even two years ago, can dramatically change with growth in some of these, particularly the inner-city areas that we're seeing. So I hope to see continued engagement, not just with council officers, but also with the relevant Chair of this committee. Because I think often, we underestimate the role of those relationships with these chairs, regardless of what side of the chamber we sit on. And it is important to be working together to get the best outcomes for our local communities.
Further debate? Councillor Davies? I'll now put the report. All those in favor say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Toomey, City Standards Committee?
Thank you Deputy Chair. I move the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 7th of June 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Toomey, seconded by councillor Adaman, that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 7th of June 2022, be adopted. Councillor Toomey?
Thank you Deputy Chair. Last week, our committee presentation was about the Magalpin feral cat management program. One of the more, most fascinating presentations I have seen in my time as acting Chair in City Standards. And I want to thank the officers for bringing it through. This project's success has resulted in greater and ongoing support for innovative species funding by building and training our community network and working together with those in the community to eradicate feral cats on Magalpin. I want to thank the community of Magalpin for getting involved in the program. The community began, Mr Deputy Chair, by competing against each other to see who could spot the first local feral cats. And the first cat was captured on cam, on camera. I was going to say Canberra, but it was captured on camera. And it was a large black tomcat. This particular beastie has been named the Tangeluba Panther. And much like other panthers sightings, this one has been quite elusive, Mr Deputy Chair. The good people of Magalpin are having a lot of trouble catching this panther. But needless to say, this cat's days are numbered. I know, thank, thank you for the, for the music, I appreciate that. Mr Deputy Chair, we did have a petition requesting that council repair Two Foot Pass in the Deacon Ward. And it is worth noting that the local councillor did support the recommendation. Mr Chair, on another matter, I have received some correspondence from the State Penalties and Enforcement Registry notifying us officially of a privacy incident. In the letter, under the heading of 'What Happened', it says, and I quote, "At this stage, we understand there was an error in the data used to prepare the letters for printing, correlating and mailing out." That sounds to me like there was an issue on their side of the process and not in council's processes. Mr Deputy Chair, I am extremely disappointed in Minister Dick's shameless attempt to blame the Shrinker Council for this error in Parliament. The minister has spent... Sorry councillor Murphy, I won't take the interjection, but the minister has spent more energy trying to pass the buck over to council, Mr Deputy Chair, than simply stating that he would look into the problem and fixing it. This is the side of politics...
Mr Deputy Chair.
Point of order councillor Cook.
Sorry, would, would the Speaker take a question at all?
No.
Or would he table the letter at all through you, Mr Deputy Chair?
Councillor Toomey?
I, I, I'm just not quite following what we're even talking about at this point, at all.
So councillor Toomey, councillor Cook has asked if you could table the letter. Is that something you'd like to do? So councillor Cook, councillor Toomey has advised that it's not up to him to do so, but he will seek further advice. Councillor Toomey, please continue.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Just for councillor Cook's benefit, this became evident when there was a breach of privacy that involved a quite, a large number, in the thousands, of Queensland residents who were incorrectly issued spur fines. And it was a complete breach of privacy, which was in the Courier-Mall a couple of weeks ago. Yep. I'm, I'm quite happy, I, I, I'll take councillor Cook's interjection. I do understand that she's just indicated that she doesn't read the Courier-Mall. I'm happy to forward the, the article to her. I can do that, so I will, I will endeavor to do that. Mr Chair, getting back to what I was saying, this is the side of politics that Brisbane residents are really, really tired of. Observers have noted that the state have lost their federal government punching bag and are desperate to find someone else to blame for their own failures. Maybe the minister should focus on doing a better job for Queenslanders. I'll take that interjection, yes, I understand. I understand his heart's not in it councillor Johnson, thank you. I think that's been acknowledged.
If we could just allow the Chair to continue uninterrupted, please.
Thank you, I will take councillor Johnson's interjection. Yes, the, the minister's heart just does not seem to be in the job. But, you know, that's, that's how it is. But, Mr Deputy Chairman, I would like to thank the Cars Officers and especially those that are out in the streets on a day-to-day basis in this good city of ours, keeping us safe. And by no means was this incident a reflection on the good work that they are doing for the city of Brisbane and the Brisbane residents. Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair.
Thank you councillor Toomey. Any debate on the report?
Thanks.
Councillor Cumming?
Mr Chair, I, I'd like to speak briefly about the Mulgumpin feral cat trial. And I, I think it's a good idea. I think it was a Commonwealth government funding and council worked closely with the local community. Unfortunately, I think there was only one cat caught during the period, but they're confident that they've got the skills to catch more, which is great. Because everyone will know, feral cats are a dreadful animal. It's caused enormous damage to native species for, since they came out with the first fleet. And I'm a cat lover myself, but I'm a domesticated, housebound cat lover. And I think, even people who let their cats go outside and end up catching local birds and everything are, are a nuisance. And of course, if they escape, there's a, there's a great movie called Hundred Million Cats. I think that was the, that was the estimate of how many, how many feral cats there were in Australia at one stage a few years ago. And they start around the dumps in, in country areas, you know, eating, eating any food, stuff they can find there. And then gradually spread, spreads throughout the bush and kill off the, you know, the bilbies and goodness knows what else. So it's a great, it's a great program. And I'd like to see plenty of feral cats, including the panther, including the panther, caught on, caught on Mulgumpin. And also like to see the council officers operating around the rest of Brisbane catch plenty of feral cats too. Thank you.
Any further debate? Councillor Toomey?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Can I thank councillor Cumming for his input? Just to correct the record, they didn't catch any cats, councillor Cumming. They caught a photograph of the panther. And they're hunting, they're, they're hunt, they are hunting that bad boy down. But thank you, thank you very much for your support. Uh, but thank you, thank you very much for your support for, during committee too councillor Cumming, thank you.
Uh, I will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee.
Um, Mr Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 7th of June, 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 7th of June, 2022 be adopted. councillor Howard.
Uh, thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Uh, before moving to the report, I just want to, um, talk just about a few things that have been happening in and around Brisbane. One of the things that, uh, we're very proud of is that, um, the, um, Fernigrove Falcons New Change Room Project has won the AFL Community Facilities Award for Queensland. The Ken Gannon Awards recognised best practising community football facility development across Australia, along with people, clubs and other stakeholders driving the best projects. And as Brisbane City Council is a joint funding partner in this project, we're very proud that one of our facilities has won this award in Queensland. I'm also very proud to report to the chamber that Lifestyle and Community Services held their LCS Star Awards, um, just the other day. And councillor Toomey and I were privileged to be part of the mid-year awards ceremony, where, um, our council officers, their peers nominate them for an award. And it was great to, uh, to see so many people participating and so many people being nominated. And I just want to say to each and every one, you're all stars. Uh, the Design Conference was, um, also held at the Powerhouse. And, uh, the Design Conference is about bringing together young designers from right across Brisbane. And they do a magnificent job. This is the second year that I've, uh, attended. And I just want to give a big shout out to them and say a huge thank you uh, for what they do for our, um, wonderful, um, design, young designers across Brisbane. It was also a great pleasure and I think councillor Cumming joined me at the Luminous Lantern Parade, um, on Friday evening. This parade just gets better and better every year. And I really want to say a huge thank you to Multicultural Australia for, um, growing this to, um, to the stage that this, we had the governor, we had Minister Leanne Leonard there. And everybody was just so thankful for, um, being able to come together and celebrate our multicultural community. Um, we started the parade, it was quite a cold night, but we, um, started the parade. And there were just so many people lining the pathways of South Bank. And I understand there were about 9,000 people, um, present. It was followed by a concert and, and from what I hear, um, everybody had a fantastic time. But I really want to thank them for allowing, uh, me to be part of that. I represented the Lord Mayor and it was, uh, a, a, a great opportunity for us to celebrate all things multicultural. On the weekend, uh, in, in your ward, Mr Deputy Chair, the Royal Queensland Arts Society celebrated their 132nd Members Annual Exhibition. And, um, I don't think that we often celebrate enough some of these societies that have been around for quite so long. And the Royal Queensland Arts Society is just, uh, another amazing organisation that supports local artists. And it was great to see over 100 people attended, uh, great to see, um, local artists, uh, being recognised. And really want to congratulate the Royal Queensland Arts Society on their 132nd Members Annual Exhibition. And speaking about, um, uh, people who have been around for a little while, the Embroiderers Guild of Queensland, um, also had the opening of their biennial exhibition. And, uh, I was thrilled to attend with the Lady Meress, Nina Shrinna. And, um, we just had the best time. It was, it was fantastic. I have, the next time I'm at a big, um, nighttime event, which councillor Cumming's always keeping an eye on when I am, I will have a beautifully embroidered bag to show you from my, my efforts there. But the Lady Meress went one better than me. She's actually purchased, um, some needlework. And so we'll be very interested to see how that all sort of, um, works out. But can I just say, the, the, the group of, um, the group of ladies that were there at the Embroiderers Guild were just so thrilled to have the Lady Meress there and, and her interest and, um, and, and just to be able to see the fantastic work that they do. Now, um, it is still open, it will cost you $8 if you want to go along. I think they're open till this weekend. Uh, it's just there in Fortitude Valley at the top of Brunswick Street. So, um, I really encourage you, um, to get along and to, uh, to see the, it's just, um, the work, the workmanship is just, uh, amazing. So, um, and then finally, um, no, two more things. Uh, the New Farm United Soccer Club had their party in the park. Now, this was at, uh, this, this is a unique soccer club. It's, uh, it has its, um, home in, uh, New Farm Park, which as everybody knows is a, a much loved park and they've been there for many, many years. And, uh, the party in the park was just, uh, again, a wonderful opportunity for families to come together and to celebrate, um, the, the start of, uh, well, no, I think it's the middle of their season, but they had a wonderful party in the, in the park. And then, uh, finally, on Sunday, I attended the 166th anniversary of Trinity Sunday at, um, at, at Holy Trinity down at Fortitude Valley. This is one of the oldest churches within, in fact, I think it is, I don't think it's quite the oldest. But, um, what I do want to say is that Father Rodney has done a magnificent job of bringing people together. It's a very diverse area. We, um, we had a fantastic, um, lunch. And, uh, we were joined by, um, the Torres Strait Islander Community who, um, regularly hold a service at this church. So, um, it really was a fantastic, um, week. So, um, as I say always, there's so much to see and do in Brisbane. Moving to the committee presentation, um, last week, we had a presentation by the Archives Coordinator, Annabelle Lloyd. Um, and it was about city archives, digital treasures. Now, um, many of you will have attended a committee presentation where Annabelle has been pre- present. And we all know just how fantastic it is. We didn't have the opportunity to don our gloves this year because, um, Annabelle took us through, um, the new digital treasures that are able to be, um, to be used. So, um, under the Public Records Act of 2002, um, it was determined that we should collect, manage and maintain the permanent records of council city archives. And, and that was established in 1994 and located in a specialised facility in Maruka. The committee was shown the Brisbane Images website, where users can browse collections and submit inquiries online. And the website was launched in 2001 and contains a unique collection of images drawn from the council's photographic archives, which predominantly date back to 1949. And we were just amazed at how clear those particular images were. So, um, the, um, the, the archives, the city archives is located at Muriel Avenue at, um, Maruka. And it is open to the public. So, um, if, uh, anyone is interested in getting along, I'm sure Annabelle will make you very, very welcome. And I really want to thank Annabelle for her, um, wonderful dedication to this city and to preserving all of the wonderful archives that we, that we have. And I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Howard, uh, any debate? No debate, I'll put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee.
Thanks, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 7th of June be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Huang, that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 7th of June, 2022 be adopted. councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Before I get to the committee report, I'd like to acknowledge and just place on record my thanks and the administration's thanks to Sue Rikaby, who has dedicated roughly 16 years of her career to Brisbane City Council. It has been an absolute pleasure to work with you, Sue, in your latest role as manager of support services. And I do want to wish you all the very best for your future. Thank you, Sue. Item A, Mr Deputy Chair, is the committee presentation, which was from the chief financial officer. And gave the committee an overview of the Queensland Reconstruction Authority and how council will interact with them as we rebuild and recover from the floods. The QRA manages the disaster relief funding arrangements, which are jointly funded by the state and federal governments. The Minister for Fire and Emergency Services is responsible for activating the disaster funding. Council requested on, uh, activation, uh, on the 27th of February this year in response to the unfolding event. I've previously updated the chamber on the significant programme of work that's been undertaken by corporate finance in the initial response to the flood event. And that work is continuing, Mr Chair. In the interests of, um, ratepayers, we'll be ensuring that council is reimbursed for all flood recovery expenses that we are eligible for. There is a long road ahead and I intend to keep our committee informed on our work with the QRA. Mr Deputy Chair, we also had a petition which opposed COVID-19 vaccine mandates. Council does not create public health directives. However, we strictly comply with all the directives that we have received. The pandemic is an ongoing challenge and we'll continue to work to protect our staff and visitors to council facilities. And I will leave the rest to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Cunningham, any debate? councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you. Um, I rise to speak on item, um, A, the Queensland Reconstruction Authority and the disaster funding arrangements for Brisbane City Council. I think it's a good thing that there is some debate about the floods coming on to the council agenda because there's been very little over the last, uh, three months. And, uh, it's quite disappointing because we're just not seeing, um, the right level of action from council about, um, flood recovery. The flood disaster reimbursement arrangements are something that, um, I don't think I did understand all that well, uh, back in 2011. It was quite an opaque structure and it may be different, um, than it is today. Um, but what I do know is that back in 2011, after the floods, council did not scope, fully scope and list all of the damaged public infrastructure in my ward that was flooded and ask, uh, for funding for it to be repaired and or replaced. And that led to the situation where a number of public assets, including public pontoons for kayaking, um, playgrounds, streets that were flooded and damaged, were never properly repaired or replaced. Um, and we missed out on getting, um, critical public infrastructure in Tennyson Ward, uh, put back on the agenda. Now, we know from back then, um, uh, that council had a gap between the amount that it cost and the amount that they reimbursed through the disaster funding scheme. And that, that'll end up being a few hundred million dollars again, as it was, uh, back in 2011. But, uh, what I do know is that the failure to properly include all flood damaged infrastructure in the scoping works is a problem. And this is what I've been getting at over the last few weeks and including on multiple occasions today. Um, this council cannot tell us where flood damaged infrastructure is. I've reported, um, hundreds, hundreds of roads, footpaths, playgrounds, drains, parks, you, you name it, we've reported it through to council. Um, I barely get an acknowledgement from council. Uh, council's been unable to provide me with lists. And when, uh, lists of damaged playgrounds have been provided, they have been fundamentally wrong. They've been missing flooded playgrounds, they haven't included replacing, uh, areas that have been damaged within parks. Um, they're just, it's simply not been done, uh, in my view, uh, fully and properly. And again, I, because no one's consulting with me, I've got some acting, uh, outcome manager who's a very nice person, but she's a comms officer on Sir Convent from somewhere. And she's getting all her information, uh, from, uh, somewhere in Brisbane Square. Um, and she's passing on information to me that I know is not correct. I know because I can see it on the ground. And this council, um, has and continues to ignore it. So my biggest fear is like 2011, council will not have properly scoped the full extent of flood damage in Tennyson Ward and other wards and then properly made a claim, uh, to be reimbursed for as much of that as we can under the disaster recovery funding. And the reason, of course, that's so important in Tennyson Ward is because there's very little capital from ongoing budgets that comes into Tennyson Ward. So these things like the pontoon at Taylor Bridge Reserve at Chelma that got washed away in 2011 has never, ever been replaced. That's despite repeated petitions in this place. Um, that's despite the fact that council purpose built, um, a pontoon to build the walkway on the Indrapilly side of the river, but wouldn't build, um, the pontoon on the Chelma side where the staging was, so it could be kept and used for canoeers. Like, council couldn't even compromise and do that. So my biggest fear here is that council simply, um, will miss things. And the way not to miss things is to be open, transparent and consultative, uh, so that we can fully identify all of those road projects, all of the park and, um, critical, um, assets like stormwater that need to be fixed, because I can't see that that is happening. And I can't see that's happening because when I ask questions, no one can answer them. And today's questions on notice are, are really clear evidence of that. So I did get one little bit of interesting information from, uh, uh, what the finance chairs just said, which is, the 27th of February, I think, that might have been the Sunday? Um, and I'm just going to have a super quick look. Um, that, uh, council made the claim on Sunday, the 27th, or activated, I don't know if they made a claim, but they activated the disaster arrangements on Sunday, the 27th of, uh, February. Now, the Lord Mayor hadn't even announced there was a flood on Sunday, the 27th of February. At 8:26 PM in the afternoon, uh, evening, I got an email through the early, uh, sorry, I got a text message through the early, um, warning alert service telling me, um, that it was gonna flood. It had actually flooded at lunchtime on Saturday, the 26th. So I find it fascinating that council was already activating its funding model for the disaster scheme, but had not publicly communicated with the community that there was a flooding disaster unfolding. And I absolutely think that is fascinating and I'm gonna do a little file request to find out what was said and when. I note that, uh, paragraph eight, uh, of this says that council is well versed and has administrative procedures to provide immediate guidance, such as fact sheets. Um, and they're provided to frontline workers. An additional high level guidance on how to manage flood impacts in relation to, uh, financial problems is also available. Wouldn't it be really good if we say had a list of all of the projects that have been identified? I'd like to know, um, the following. Have any claims been made to date? Um, it clearly makes provision in the presentation to say that, uh, uh, there will be multiple claims. So I hope the finance chairman, unlike all the other chairs today, doesn't ignore this question. But have any claims been made to date? What was the amount that they've been made for? And what were the items included in those claims? Um, and, uh, I, I don't think that's an unreasonable thing. Um, the Lord Mayor slashed and burnt this year's budget to pay for flood recovery, of which we'll get a huge proportion of it back. But when you ask this administration to say what it is they're doing with that money, they cannot tell you. They cannot give you a list. They cannot say, yes, we've got X, Y and Z. So here's the question. It's great that we've got this theoretic, theoretical presentation about finance. And councillor Strunk, this might be something you might like to follow up in Finance Committee when it resumes. But have any claims been made yet under the, uh, disaster recovery payment, uh, claims? If so, how much, uh, are, are those amounts? And what are they for? Let's get an itemised list of what the council's been asking for. And I think that, um, that might be very interesting because whilst, when I ask public questions about what's happening with flood recovery, um, council stands up and says that there is no information available, or, I'm sorry, it says, the information is still being compiled. An accurate list is currently unavailable. So maybe I'm wrong. Maybe councillor Cunningham will stand up and say, we've made no claims to date. We've not asked for any disaster recovery payments yet. But my best guess is if we activated this process on the 27th of February, this council has already made dozens and dozens of claims under this funding scheme. And yet when you ask what, uh, uh, what infrastructure has been flooded and what's going to be replaced, they cannot tell you. Now, that lacks transparency, it lacks accountability and it lacks openness. And that is again, the fundamental problem with this LNP administration, that they don't want to be accountable for their actions. So I hope I'm wrong, I hope councillor Cunningham will stand up now and she will tell us, yes, we've made three claims, therefore $333 million. Um, and there are 3,000 projects which are X, Y and Z. three claims, therefore $333 million and there are 3,000 projects which are X, Y and Z. And councillor Johnston, I'd be happy to send you a list of those projects in your ward so you know what's going on. Wouldn't that be good? Imagine if we lived in a council and worked in a council where it was as simple as that, that you ask for information, you don't have to ask 10 times, you don't have to ask officially, you don't have to write it on a piece of paper and send it in and wait four weeks for something to come back. What if you could just say, well, it's public money, it's a ratepayers' money, it'd be good to have a public accounting on how it's being spent? So I'll just put on the record again, councillor Cunningham, how many claims have been made for what amounts and what items have we been claiming? I think Brisbane ratepayers deserve to know.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Any further debate? Councillor Cunningham?
Yes, thanks, Mr Deputy Chair. As I said in my report, we intend to keep the Finance Committee up to date with the claims as they are made. Thanks.
I'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Petitions. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Cook?
Thank you. I've got a petition to urgently install backflow devices for Morning Sideboard.
Thank you. Councillor Cumming?
A petition calling for the Meals on Wheels facility at 880 Manly Road, Wakely, to officially name the Ken Edwards Centre in favour of Ken Edwards OAM.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Chair, I have a petition requesting council repurpose two city cats, to rename them city dogs, to pay tribute to the Bluey Television series and assist with the 2022 flood event recovery.
Thank you. Councillor Landers, may I have a motion for receiving the petitions?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
A second. It's been moved by councillor, oh, sorry, it's been moved by councillor Landers, second and by councillor Strunk, that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? No? Are there any matters of general business? Councillor Owen?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I rise to speak tonight on the big freeze and also International Thank a First Responder Day. And when I'm referring to the big freeze, Mr Deputy Chair, I'm not talking about the cold weather. I'm actually talking about the very important work of the fundraising that is going on at the moment to raise funds into motor neuron disease research. This is something that is very close to my heart. I had one of my primary school and high school classmates who unfortunately had motor neuron disease and Craig is no longer with us, but he still lives on in our hearts. And it was pleasing to see the story bridge lit up blue in recognition of those who are currently challenged with motor neuron disease and those who have passed. It is a very insidious disease and from initial diagnosis to generally losing these wonderful people, it is usually a period of 27 months. It's a very short timeframe. We were fortunate that Craig fought the hard fight for about four and a half years and he really, really fought hard and it is very, very difficult to see someone that you know go through that crippling situation and to get to the end and not be able to communicate in many ways and care for themselves. So I do encourage people to learn a little bit more about MND and if you can, support the fundraising efforts into the research component of motor neuron disease. I also want to encourage more people to take opportunities to help others and to realise a little effort can help immensely in a time of need. And I acknowledge the importance that last week we recognised International Thank a First Responder Day. And to all first responders, I say thank you for your service and dedication because they are out there on the front line when people are most vulnerable. Now, I know from the roster of an immediate family member that the first responder shifts are regularly 12-hour shifts minimums with additional overtime being often the norm because they can't just get up and walk away when they're attending an emergency incident. I want to shortly share an email that I received on International Thank a First Responder Day from a first responder named Kevin. And I was saddened to hear that Kevin tragically lost his home of 44 years in the bushfires of 2019. Now, the residents here in Brisbane at the time of the bushfires were unsure how we could help in a practical way. And in my local community in Calenvale Ward, we created dignity packs which reached people who needed them and they assisted in a small way at a time of need. There were so many people here who volunteered to pack the kits and also many businesses and individuals who not only donated kits but also individual items. What was important to see at that time was the many young children taking part in making up the dignity packs for other children and including special items like a toy, a small colouring book or a chup-a-chup as a way to bring a smile to another child on a very difficult day. It is times like these when kindness, love and compassion comes to the fore and I am so proud of the kind-hearted people who volunteered here to support the East Gippsland and surrounding community who were then impacted by the bushfires. Our thoughts continue to be with them all and we hope the recovery has progressed, particularly for the residents of Sarsfield like Kevin. May I take this opportunity to convey to Kevin, thank you for your 31 years of SES service and protecting and helping others. I would also like to extend that to all of his colleagues who are first responders. I'd also like to acknowledge Pearl and the Rotary Club of East Gippsland who liaised with my Rotary Club of Forest Lake to make sure that these donations from our community reach theirs. I'd like to read some comments from Kevin's email into the record and I think it speaks volumes when you hear it directly from the source. And the email reflects as follows, and I quote, "Dear councillor Owen and the Calenvale Ward community and residents of Brisbane, I found your note in two dignity packs that I received following the East Gippsland bushfires in 2019. Our home of 44 years was burnt to the ground in those fires along with another 60 or so homes in Sarsfield, a little community 15 kilometres from Bensdale. I apologise that this email has taken so long but I misplaced the letters and just found it again yesterday. My thanks for the kind thoughts and actions taken by the residents in Calenvale Ward, even though this is very late, I just wanted to say thank you one and all. I hope that your community missed the horrific floods earlier this year and that all are safe and well. I retired from the Victoria State Emergency Service 15 years ago after 31 years of service. I dealt, and I dealt with the after effects of many natural disasters. Personally though, I have only had fire to deal with but my work experience left me with no doubt that floods were worse. Everything looks great after the huge clean-up required. The house generally is still there but uninhabitable. The fire sorts that issue out and you cut the rubbish away and you have a clean sight. Again, thank you so much for all the time and effort you put into caring for us down here. I am pleased to hear how the packs came into existence and can say that the gesture was fantastic. I and many others just had the clothes we were wearing and had to set out to purchase a house full of stuff. We received many donations from all over Australia and even overseas. We were well looked after by Red Cross, Salvo's, St Vincent's, church groups, et cetera. The Sarsfield area had consisted of some 276 homes, 181 families, totaling 625 residents. And with the fire damaging just over 200 properties and totally destroying 60 homes, it almost removed our entire community. We had about 100 adults and 20 children displaced and many will take a long time to get back if they ever do return. Your packs were distributed to us and no doubt many other communities down here. Many like me are still renting and still sorting issues. Our house was on 55 hectares. We have only seen about 10 homes rebuilt to date. Have not started mine as supplies are short, labour's not available. One day it might all get sorted. I have just joined our fire recovery committee to assist in the redevelopment of Sarsfield. I have been involved with a group called the Gippsland Emergency Relief Fund almost since its inception, since the late 1970s. It came together when a group of first responders became sick of leaving the victims of a disaster at the scene with nothing. We got three people as trustees and chased up business houses, large companies to backers and we formed this charity. During the 2019 fires, we raised $10.4 million and distributed it all. People give us a dollar and we hand out that dollar. All our work is voluntary and no expense is taken. Check out our website at www.gerf.org.au. Obviously, I was not involved in that fundraiser as I was pretty busy sorting out my own mess in 2019. Thanks again for all your kindness. Regards, Kevin." So this is the true value of the wonderful people who serve as first responders, often putting others before themselves. So to Kevin and all the first responders out there, we cannot thank you enough for the work that you do.
Thank you, councillor. Any other general business? Councillor Strunk?
Yes, thanks, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on a couple of items, one a bouquet and one a brick bat, if I can put it that way. I'll go with the brick bat first, I think. Why not? Why not? Listen, it's about suburban neglect again and it's about, mostly it's about grass cutting or the lack thereof. Now, I know other councillors in this chamber have had their issues since probably December, late November, early December, right through to, right through to now, actually, although the growing season has slowed up, thankfully. But listen, I put questions on notice in regards to wanting to know what sort of phone calls the council call centres had in regards to grass cutting. Initially, I asked for complaints but they said, "Well, we don't list complaints for grass cutting, we list just inquiries." So I had to re-ask the question the following week and they came and they gave us this list. Now, if you have a look at the ward that had the most calls in regards to grass cutting was Forest Lake Ward, 278. And the next closest one behind that was 140, which was Holland Park. And then Maruka, because I know councillor Griffiths had told me that he'd had some issues. And of course, I know councillor Hutton had some issues over in Jamboree. Now, the common thread between councillor Hutton, councillor Griffiths and myself is the contractor, the current contractor, and I know the contract is coming up for review. So I just hope councillor Marcus is back by then, if not councillor Toomey, please give me another contractor. Our contractor that looked after us or tried to look after us had to be supplemented by another contractor and it was appropriately named Junglebusters, which was an appropriate name for a group that's going to come in and help clean up the mess. We commenced the petition a couple of months ago on grass cutting and even though a lot of the issue was sort of, they caught up a little bit, right? But the e-petition went off its head and it keeps growing and it's open till the end of this month. So much so, 4BC producer Raimi last Friday and said, "Listen, the Bill McDonald Show is wanting to talk to you about that because they've seen your petition and they've seen what you've been posting online and want to have a chat to you about it." And I got a really good reception because the fill-in presenter at the time on Saturday, Peter, I think he probably lives in the Paddington Ward somewhere because he was talking about some locations that he had seen this particular issue firsthand. And he was hot to trot on that and to try to do something on behalf of the station to try to ameliate the problem. But of course, it's not just this type of suburban neglect, the cutting of the grass, which is really core business for this council or any council, all right? But it's also reconstruction of footpaths that go faulty. And again, if we have a look at the figures that are produced today, I'm leading the pack in some cases, not quite as many as councillor Griffiths, you're over 100. But, and that was just inquiries, that was just complaints. There's council officers out there that identify these things that have to be reconstructed but they have to wait for their money, all right? So there's many, many more than 100, obviously, in the Maruka Ward or 67 in Forest Lake or 70 odd in Inala. But again, core business. This is, you know, we spend hundreds of millions of dollars on transport systems, right? New upgrades of roads like Kingston, Sisley, $650 million. That has not reduced the traffic congestion really at all, so I'm told, and the time on the road is just as slow as it has ever been. It may look like a lovely road, and it does, right? But $650 million where that sort of money should be spent on the core items for council. Road resurfacing, footpath reconstruction, cutting of the grass. And even our parks in the Forest Lake Ward are being neglected. I just recently did a video, I think it's up online on Facebook, and I showed the green space or a footpath track that goes from Clarence Close through to Brookside. And 15 years ago, you could actually see from Clarence Place through to Brookside, you could actually see the other road. Now, 15 years later, it's so overgrown and it's coming into the neighbouring properties and the neighbours are having to sort of try to deal with that. There's been multiple complaints made to council by one resident, which I won't mention her name, but one resident, multiple times every year for the last two or three years and nothing happens. Nothing happens. Now, I know councillor Marcus has had the same problem because she told me when she was coming, when she came out for a visit a year or so ago and she was having the same problems with her creek areas. They get filled up with trees that fall over and other vegetable matter that grows up in them. I have palm trees that grow into the creeks and they're just not being maintained. The investment isn't happening and it should be happening. And I just hope this budget coming up, there is more money for maintenance on our roadways, our parks, especially our parks, right? Roadways, really, it's important that we keep them resurfaced, certainly it's important that we fill in the potholes. And even the pothole issues that I have well before the rains weren't being fixed. And that's Freeman Road is a great example of that. And most of the potholes up in the Durack area and Richlands, Durack and Inala area is reported to me by a former councillor from this chamber, councillor Les Bryant. He's, and he's really hot to trot on those potholes because he doesn't like losing tyres and getting punctures and things like that. So it's important that we continue to invest and it's important that this council prioritises the suburbs first before all those other things like green bridges. I mean, give me a break. There's no one in my ward that's going to benefit from that green bridge unless it's maybe some sort of a contest of running across the bridge or something, I don't know. But they're certainly not going to use it on a daily, a weekly, a monthly or a yearly basis and all that money is being spent, hundreds of millions of dollars are being spent. Yeah, it looks great, but what about the core business? And so I'll just end my comments here.
Thank you, councillor Strunk. Any further general business? Councillor Johnston?
Sorry, Pete, I'll be quick. Councillor, sorry, I'd like to speak briefly on Maruine.
Oh, councillor, just one second, camera splashing again.
Yep.
Yeah, you're good.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to speak on mowing footpaths, the Lord Mayor's correspondence to Tennyson Ward residents, and councillor Adam Allen's failure to address the issues I raised earlier today. Firstly, could I just check with councillor Strunk, how many damaged footpaths did you have in your ward on that list?
Well, this is my suburb.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do it formally. So councillor Strunk, would you take a question from councillor Johnston?
Well, I would have just taken an interjection.
I'm happy to take an interjection. You think suburbs, it was about 120.
Right. So I'll start with the following then. I'll start with the footpaths, councillor Strunk. I've done a quick addition with the, this is just the damaged footpaths from 2021/22. So over the past year, this list that was put out today, there's 410 damaged footpaths in Tennyson Ward, 410. There are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of damaged footpaths in Tennyson Ward that aren't being fixed. And I note that there's one in particular I recently raised with councillor Toomey, who is the acting chairperson, and he's not gotten back to me about it. It was both a mowing problem and a footpath problem, and I think it shows what's going on with this council, and that is utter neglect, a failure to manage our contracts, and a failure to deliver even a basic level of service to the people of Brisbane. Now, you thought the footpaths were bad. Let's have a little look at the other list that's in here today, which is on the grass cutting, the mowing. Now, last week, councillor asked how many complaints had been made about mowing, and council actually said zero. The LNP councillors believe no one in Brisbane is complaining about mowing. Now, I know that they know that's not true, but yet they decided to print it and put it on the public record and try and claim that there's nothing to see, there's no problems here. Well, again, today we see in the answers to the questions on notice that there are massive, massive problems with grass cutting right across the city. And I just would like to note that the top five worst mowing problems in the city are all on the south side of Brisbane. Forest Lake is number one, Calenvale Ward is number two, Holland Park Ward is number three, and Tennyson Ward is number four. 139 complaints about grass cutting, not in a year, in three months, in March, April and May. So across three months, there were 139 complaints about long grass, and that's the tip of the iceberg, because people were aware that there was floods and there were problems. But Maruka Ward rounds out the top five of the worst mowing areas in Brisbane.
And the worst footpaths.
And the worst footpaths, there you go. So I'm going to combine them, because I think our three wards are going to be at the worst maintenance level for anything that you do in council, and these lists just prove it. And all the heads go down over there and no one says anything, we're not going to invest in those areas, there's no complaints, there's no problems. Well, the data before us today shows it very, very clearly, that the wards on the south side are being neglected by the LNP. You ask questions about why it's not being done properly, and you can't get answers on that, and then they try and say, well, there's nothing to see here. So you can't hide from this kind of bad report card. It is fundamentally not good enough. Councillor Marks stood up here, and God bless her cotton socks, she's tried, she's tried, but it's just not working. She stood up here and says, in answer to the question, there's plenty of money to fix footpaths. Clearly, there's not. There's 410 in Tennyson Ward in the past year that look pretty bad, and I've seen them, they are shocking. They're dangerous, they're trip hazards, they're old, they've been ground multiple times, they've had sections replaced with bitumen that never come back to be fixed. They're that old, they've got potholes in the footpaths. It's not good enough. And I just think the answers to the questions on notice today should be a wake-up call to this administration that they are failing the people of Brisbane in the suburbs, and particularly on the south side. Very briefly on councillor, the Lord Mayor. Well, the Lord Mayor's finally woken up and realised it flooded out in Tennyson Ward, and he's written a letter. It's gone, I know, to Yorongar and to Corinda, because people have contacted me about it, and I just want to put on the record what the Lord Mayor's priorities are for the flooded people of Brisbane in my ward. Firstly, the letter says, and I quote, "Two thirds of our ferry network has now returned to service with work on restoring services in your area to the Regatta, Milton and UQ terminals still underway. Because of the investment in building flood resilient terminals, we will fully restore the services across the network in just a matter of months." This is written to a resident in Corinda, nowhere near where the ferries are, nowhere near, as the Lord Mayor likes to put out, your area near the Regatta, Milton and UQ terminals. Now, if this had been written to somebody in Paddington Ward, I'd go, oh yeah, well, maybe, they could walk down there and maybe they could use it. But, you know, 12 kilometres away in Oxley Creek where it flooded, and the creek is filthy, degraded, clogged up, full of rubbish, and residents can't even drive out of their streets or walk in their footpaths, the Lord Mayor thinks that top priority is to write to Corinda residents and tell them he's fixed the ferries on the north side of Brisbane, nowhere near them. But it gets better, it gets better. The letter goes on, and one resident tells me, she got the letter on the 10th of June, it encourages people to ask for their $250 rebate by the 15th of June, so good on him for giving them a good amount of time. It then goes on to say, sign up for our early warning alert service. Now, that would be excellent if he'd managed to include some details about how to do that in the letter. So good on you, Lord Mayor. Residents out my way are just scratching their heads about what you're up to. Finally, with respect to councillor Adam Allen, and earlier, I did call him gutless, and I am more than happy to say that it is, I think, a reflection of these LNP chairs, people I don't even know, like, I barely know councillor Allen, he just is on the far side of the city to me, I'm not on any committees with him, he's only been here a few years, really. But let me just say this, that I raised an issue in good faith, that he, in return in good faith, could have said, yes, councillor, I'll talk to you about that, I've heard what you've said, I understand you've missed out, and I'll find out why. And instead of doing that, he put his head down, he buried his head, and he didn't bother responding. That, in my view, is gutless.
Further general business? Councillor Cumming?
Very quickly, I know a couple of people ask me why I'm wearing this jersey today. It was a great day for Australian soccer. It's our fifth time in a row we've qualified for the World Cup finals, and it's 100 years, actually this year, since Australia plays its first international in 1922 in New Zealand. And there's going to be a dinner at Parliament House shortly, and there's a representative from the Winham Club and the Grainstissel Club were selected in that team 100 years ago. The World Cup was held every four years since 1930. Australia actually banned from the World Cup, people don't know this, in the 50s and early 60s, because they'd ignored the international transfer fees that people would know in football, if you want to get a player to come and play for you, you've got to buy him from his current club to get him to come and play for you. But Australia, they thought they'd ignore that rule, and FIFA, though, the international federation, don't take kindly to that, people who behave like that, so they got banned from the World Cup for a number of years. We first tried to qualify in 1966, we finally made it in 74, but then we had the long period of 32 years until we qualified again in 1996, and now it's five years in a row, so that's great. We weren't expected to beat Peru, South America's a very strong standard, they're ranked 22 in the world, Australia was ranked 42, and that's out of the 200 countries that entered the World Cup. So it was Australia's 20th qualifying match in two years to try to get to the finals, and they've only been able to play five at home because of COVID complications. So they won five, four on penalties, we brought on a special penalty-saving goalkeeper, Andrew Redmain, I think he actually played for the Roar before he went down south, and he did a Wiggles routine to try to put the opposition players off before they took their penalty. Well, it might have worked because he saved two penalties, the Peruvian goalkeeper only saved one, so we won the penalty shootout. The World Cup is being held from November 21 to December 8 in Qatar, and it was normally held in June, July, but this year it's been moved because it's a little bit cooler in Qatar in November, December than it is in June, July. It's still very hot, though. They've promised, though, they're going to produce stadiums which are air-conditioned. But anyhow, and Australia being a very tough first-round group with France, Denmark and Tunisia. Look, I congratulate coach Graham Arnold, the Aussies through and through, he's worked very hard with the team and he's lifted them to a higher standard, he's done brilliantly, well done, Arnie, and well done, the Socceroos.
Any further general business? No? Meeting closed.